Welcome to the April Board of Education meeting. We're calling to order at a little late, 7:02. I apologize for that. If everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mrs. Rowley, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. First item on the agenda is Avon Achievers. Mr. Chianini for Pine Grove School, if you could come forward and Mr. Burke is going to assist you, and I understand you may have to have football gear to get past the crowd.
Yes. News of my Avon Achiever presentation has spread clearly. Unfortunately, I won't be doing all the talking this evening, so sorry to let you down. Actually, I'm going to ask Mary Beth Lefebvre to join me. And I'm going to ask John, Ronald, and TJ to come up as well. So, for all the teachers in the room, you can appreciate this, we've all done our internship hours. And that was that time in college when you went out to a local elementary or secondary school and you spent some time observing a master teacher and possibly getting to do a sample lesson yourself to get some feedback early on in your career. And usually in that situation, you have an opportunity to spend some time in the school, get a little feedback, and that's about where the relationship ends. This year, we've had a unique experience at Pine Grove School with some interns from CCSU, and it's been a little bit different, a little more of a two-way street than our typical internship experience, where I think we've gained as much from having them here as they've gained maybe from spending some time with us. So I'm actually going to have Mary Beth talk a little bit about it, because they were part of the wellness department.
Okay. For the past two years, Pine Grove School has partnered with CCSU's Health and Physical Education Program. We've had the opportunity to help prepare many aspiring teachers, and most recently partnered with CCSU to implement aspects of what we call the PASS program, P-A-S-S, all capital letters. Ron, TJ, and John are three very talented interns that I've had the pleasure of working with. They've observed and are now teaching a series of free lessons in order to prepare them for student teaching next year. They also have really bonded and connected with the Pine Grove Elementary School students. These young men are so highly motivated to learn as much as they can, all right, and are frequently put in long hours for lesson plans, monitoring student progress, assessments, we all know. They ask for feedback regularly from myself or my co-teacher, Aunt Peralt, or from Mr. G or Mr. RW. Their willingness to take suggestions, to make themselves better, to modify their lessons and experiment with different strategies really demonstrates their motivation on how well they want to become better teachers. They are very interested in the student's progress, and they try to make sure that the students themselves do their very best in every activity that they do. Ron, TJ, and John have helped bring the PASS program, P-A-S-S, to Pine Grove as well. PASS stands for Physically Active School Systems. This program encourages schools to include multiple opportunities for physical activity throughout the school day, aside from physical education. In addition to this, I'm sorry, these interns, along with 14 other CCSU students, have been visiting Pine Grove every Tuesday for seven weeks, where they give every school, every classroom in the entire school a 10-minute brain break. In addition to this, on the morning of Friday, April 7th, we had a team-building exercise for grades 2, 3, and 4, which they also led. And then in the afternoon, when we had a half-day, the two professors, Carol Seattle from CCSU and another professor from SCSU ran a professional development for our staff on PASS. So, in addition, so on behalf of the school, Mr. Chianini, myself, and the school community, and the wellness department, of course, we'd like to thank the three of them for their time, their effort at Pine Grove School, and to help include more physically active minutes in our school day. They're going to make excellent teachers.
Yeah, perfect. Congratulations to you.
Still have a year to go, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Roaring Brook School Avon Achievers, presented by the Principal Noam Stern and assisted by Wendy Howard.
I didn't realize Pine Grove had expanded into colleges. Very excited to be here tonight. I view education as a journey, schooling is a journey, and it's a journey that takes a lot of time, a lot of talent, and a lot of effort. Naomi, come on up. Every once in a while, I come across a student like Naomi Davidson, who is a second grader in Nancy Usich's class. And students like Naomi are the embodiment of what I think is really the hardest of those three things, which is effort, because you've got to sink your teeth into your work. And I have seen Naomi sink her teeth into every single part of schooling, from the day that I met her, on the first or second day of school, whether she's involved in reading or writing, or she's in the gym, or she's just enjoying recess. She is somebody who gives it her all. I think she's a true embodiment of what Roaring Brook and Ava Public Schools are like. So congratulations, Naomi. Do you want your whole?
And turn it over to Mr. Sparks for our second Avon Achiever.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Thank you. Congratulations, Naomi.
It's a pleasure to join with Noam in awarding the next Avon Achiever to Samantha Jubick, Ms. D. So Samantha, will you come up? And would you bring Chloe, too?
Yeah.
Samantha was a great find for us at Roaring Brook School. She first introduced herself to the community, had a big impact on us when she came as a substitute last year in a variety of roles. This year, we had a chance to hire her on full-time, and we were very excited that we nailed it down and got her on board, because she's been an incredible educator. By title, she's a paraeducator, but as any of you teachers in the audience will attest, at the heart of every paraeducator is a true teacher. She works with teachers, she works with occupational therapists, speech therapists, bus drivers, custodians, ordinary administrators, parents, and most importantly, she has had a huge impact on a targeted group of students. And she's had a significant impact on the wider school in general. Samantha has come to us with energy and enthusiasm every day. She brings artistic talent, she brings passion, and she brings hard work to her job. And she has saved the life, I know it, of one particular youngster that we have in mind. Avon Public Schools opens its doors to everyone in the community. Come on in, and we have your public education. And kids come in all shapes and sizes and abilities, and Samantha has opened up her heart and her home and every part of her to make sure the learning experience for all the kids, one in particular, has been nothing short of spectacular. So on behalf of all of the teachers and the staff and administrators and Roaring Brook community, we congratulate Samantha Jubick, Ms. D., as an Avon Achiever.
All right. We've now finished with that portion of the agenda, so we usually excuse people who came particularly for that, so that they can leave and not feel embarrassed and not have to stay for all of our work, which sometimes I'm told is not as stimulating as what we just did. At this point, I'm going to exercise a point of personal privilege. I'd like to thank Wendy Howard for her years of service on the Board of Education. Those in the public don't appreciate how much time and effort they put in. Wendy has put in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and she is, she is resigning effective May 3, if my memory is correct, and will be moving out of state, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. And then at this point, I would like to ask for an amendment to the agenda. At the superintendent's request, we have, and on your, on the, next to your place-setting, a list of non-renewals and reductions in force. And the proposal would be normally to put that on the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to add to the agenda?
Does someone move?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mrs. Rowley moves. Mrs. Blair seconds. Any comments? No comments? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No opposition? No, any abstentions? No abstentions. All right. Next item is the minutes. And in accordance with our ordinary procedure, we only do subsection A, which is the Board of Education minutes. We leave the committee minutes to the committees involved themselves. Can I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Mrs. Howard moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Young seconds. All right. Any comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? Any abstentions? No abstentions carries unanimously. All right. Communications from the public. And I thought y'all might be here for communications from the public. Let me just give you the basic ground rules on how it normally works. Any member of the public can come up and speak. You have up to three minutes. I always tell people, if you finish faster, no one has ever criticized anyone for being pithy and getting the job done quicker. But you have up to three minutes. Normally, we take 15 minutes. My guess is, we're not going to be done in 15 minutes if everyone speaks. So we can extend that, well, usually what we do is we go until we hit that period, and then we move for an extension, and then usually the board approves it, but the board is the board, and I can't tell you ahead of time what we're going to do. So, all right. That being said, would anyone like to address the board? Just raise your hand and come on up. Don't be shy. Young lady in the back in the blue, come on up and tell us your name.
Carol Shabinski. I have a 10th grader, an 8th grader, and a 6th grader. I sent an email to Houston, but I don't know if you had time to forward it to everybody. I'm going to try and talk fast. I wanted to speak because I was very disappointed to see that Avon Theater was on the cut list that was sent out last night. I come to a lot of budget meetings, and that's never been mentioned before at any of the meetings that I've been at. It's a wonderful program. It serves a lot of kids at the middle school and the high school, and I think a lot of people in this room are here because of their concerns of the theater program. I'd like to, it was a little unclear whether just classes were being affected or whether the programs themselves were going to be impacted. There's over 170 kids that participate in productions between Thompson Brook, the middle school, and the high school. It's a great program that does a lot for kids who don't do sports and aren't involved in other things. And the teacher, Mrs. Patterson, who runs it, does a great job at the high school, and I think that there could even be more classes offered in the middle school. Not everybody even gets it in the middle school, because it's not offered in that many sections. I did a little research today, and our Simsbury, Farmington, West Hartford, and Glastonbury all offer theater classes, you know, and they also offer electives that we don't offer at the high school, like culinary arts and other consumer family science things, so to get rid of another area of classes that we're not offering here, I think makes our high school look worse. I'm also concerned that the board's being asked to vote on reducing additional teachers at the high school without even knowing what those five teachers are. You know, if we can eliminate the theater department, when I look at the faculty list, does that mean the three art teachers are going to be gone? Or the business department and some of the other small departments? So I'm very worried about voting for cuts before you even know what they are. I was also concerned to see that a counselor was being eliminated. We lost a counselor a couple of years ago, and these counselors are overworked and not able to do all the things that they need to do, so to lose another one and increase their workload, I disagree with. I do, also, I wasn't surprised to see it, but I am a big fan of the Student Assistance Center. I really think if there's a way to keep that, that that's a valuable program, that I know a lot of people have spoken on to you in the past. I know it's a tough budget year, so my suggestion, which might not make me popular with, you know, everybody, is to look at the class sizes at the elementary level. I think there's some room for some additional cuts there. You know, when I look at Pine Grove and Roaring Brook, when they're going to have 17, 18 kids in a second grade class, just as an example, the Pine Grove enrollment for second grade is 123 with seven sections, which makes 17.5 kids, and the fourth grade is exactly the same number, 123, and they only have six sections and 20 kids. I don't think it's bad to have 20 to 22 kids in these sections at the elementary level. My kids had even more than that. They were fine, and if you look at the historical numbers that Avon parents are used to, it's more like 20 to 22, not 17. So I think you could save a few at the high school by making cuts at the other areas. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Shabinski. Hang on, just one second. Mr. Moll, should I respond to some of these items? Because there's some clarification points.
Whatever.
All right.
Whatever the board's.
I don't want to step on your toes.
Yeah, step on my toes. It's your meeting.
Well, thank you. One, my understa, although we're certainly going to be asking the question of the superintendent, but my understanding is, we're not getting rid of the theater program, but theater classes would be eliminated. So I understand, but certainly we're going to have some questions for the superintendent on that. Now, I believe the gentleman in the second row, you'd raise your hand and come on up and tell us who you are.
Do you want to take them as you go? I don't know. Let me see where they are. Yeah.
Hello. My name is Amir Johnson. I'm a student here at Avon High School. And anything else?
No, that's good. I've actually heard your name mentioned in a complimentary fashion.
Thank you.
So I'm looking forward to great things from your comments.
Thank you. I don't want to deter from my three minutes here. So, Mr. Chianini, I know you don't like long stories, so I won't give my long story here, but I think the first thing that I look at when we talk about budget issues is the Student Assistance Center. Mainly because I use it, so if I use it, I can tell my experience and how I use it. I spoke at the climate meeting, and many other students have spoke there. Some of you weren't there. It's a great time. And a lot of people expressed that when you have these programs, it's not so that, you know, to keep the kids who have the FIBA-4 plan and the IEP plan, it's not just for them, right? Because when I came to the school, I didn't have the FIBA-4 plan or IEP. I was just somebody who was looking for help, and I seeked Ms. Mascolia as someone who would help me and has helped me. I think that a lot of problems here that we have at the school is branding what we have, our resources. A lot of times, students are not aware of the resource that we, the resources that we have at the school. And what it does is, it says, when I'm talking about these different areas of support, they go, "Really? I didn't know we had that." Because who's told me about these resources? Where have these resources been available to me? So, for me, I like to always refer back to the nine that we set as an identity for here at Avon High School. And in the nine, it talks about belonging, and the definition behind that is enjoy a sense of inclusion and belonging, right? So when I came to the school, me being in the Student Assistance Center made me belong, right? So if it's not here, and I'm going to still have that sense of inclusion, because I looked it up, and when you say that sense of inclusion, it's not saying that it's there, but if I, if it's, I'm having a sense, I'm feeling that my sense of inclusion is there at the Student Resource Center. And then another one is do good, right? Our students are always pressured to do good, right? Academically, physically, whatever else. And in that definition that was set, it says act in an ethical manner and recognize the potential to affect change, affect change in a positive way, I think. And, I mean, I can talk on and on about the Student Assistance Center, how it's helped me, but I think it'll just deteriorate from my three minutes. And another thing I want to talk about is the theater, right? So when I came to the school, I used the theater department. That was one of the classes I had. I had intro theater, it was a four-year course. I used it, and then this year, I had acting techniques. I know that the theater classes will be cut, so it seems to me like, man, all the classes that I've ever took here or ever had that sense of belonging are being taken away. Why? I mean, I don't know, but how can we keep these resources? Because here at Avon High School, we're this academically achieving school, and I think that in order to be academically achieving, we need to have the resources to, to help the students when they're struggling, because we have, yeah, we have a whole bunch of students in AEP, but where, are they getting help? Are they seeking out help from these resources that are not being branded well? And I know that my three minutes is up, and I want to say, Martin Luther King gave us a quote, and it says, "The time is always right to do what is right." Thank you.
And your name is?
Hi, my name's Molly Ford. I'm a senior at Avon High School. And I'm here to sort of talk on behalf of the theater classes and in particular, the theater teacher, Ms. Patterson. I think Ms. Patterson is one of the most excellent teachers that I've ever had at this high school. My freshman year, I took intro to acting, and I really made a lot of my close friends in that class, and it's been a place of belonging, theater. Especially, I know that Ms. Patterson herself has taken a lot of care to use theater as a home for kids who might not have anywhere else to go, who feel they do not belong in sports or any other clubs. Ms. Patterson is a really, really caring woman who really feels that it is her duty to help kids who don't really have anywhere else to go, and she does that through her theater classes. And even statistically, 240 kids per year take the theater classes at Avon Middle School, and 30 took classes at Avon High School this year, with a projected 45 next-year growth, which is a 50% growth. 60 students were in the fall play, and 90 are in the musical between the cast and the crew. So that's a very large student body, and I, for one, can speak personally that in the theater department, it would not be the same without Ms. Patterson there to guide us. She uses her strong communication skills to communicate between the school and our directors who work with us, who are not part of the school, who work with us. And without Ms. Patterson, I would say that the theater department would probably fall apart. We need someone like her to guide us and to really put in the work that she does. I don't think anyone else would ever be able to handle that kind of work, and the kind of caring and understanding that she puts into the theater community is really not matched by anyone else. And without the classes, too, for her to meet students that she might find that need the theater department, and students who didn't even consider theater as something that they might enjoy, maybe take theater as even just an elective just to take, find that they actually really enjoy, and find themselves a home and a community in the theater department. And I think that without the tires and that would never be possible.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Christian Godoy, and I'm a senior here at Avon High School, and I am the Assistant Technical Director here on the Avon Tech Theater Crew. I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of what was said before about Ms. Patterson being an integral part of the Avon Theater team. I strongly agree that without her, this program will fall apart, not only for the people who run this program are going to, I assume, leave, but also the students. She has her acting classes, which personally has brought me into the theater community. I took her class sophomore year, and there she, it kind of inspired me to take, go out on a limb and to take a theater, or to become part of the theater crew for the show Holes. And I know that's just my case, it's many cases. One student named Hunter Monroe was in my introduction to acting class, and he was a actor in Holes. And what she had given him, she gave him the opportunity to audition, she inspired him, she encouraged, and it turns out that from one of the plays here that he was in, he got a scholarship for his, for his future acting schooling, which I think that without her, he would not have received, which helped him to further explore himself. And I think that it's very important that she stays here, because without her, there will no, no longer be a theater program. That's all I can say.
Next. All right. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Morgan, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Ms. Jill Patterson. All of my life, I have been in the specialized program, and I have been, because I have an anxiety disorder and I have ADHD. Theater has been my outlet. It's been like my best medication that I could have possibly ever had. If Ms. Patterson didn't get me into theater, I don't know where I would be today. You want to quit? You want to cancel the theater classes and such? Please don't, because Ms. Patterson, she has helped me for so much. It's helped my ADHD and my anxiety, because have any of you guys seen the play Holes? Seen me as X-ray in Holes? Any of you? Well, I was an X-ray, I was X-ray in Holes. And it turns out that there's one day where I did not take my medication, and it was the best rehearsal that I have ever had. My ADHD, with me being on, with ADHD comes with bouncing off the walls every two seconds, being on some sugar high, I have, it was the best performances I've ever had, those three, those three performances. I did not take my medication, because theater showed me that I can be someone else. I can be her, and Ms. Patterson, she, she helped me see that no matter who I, I can be whoever I want, and I don't have to care what everybody else thinks. I was bullied, I was a victim of bullying, and she helped me see that you don't have to care about what other people think and what other people say. I am this person, and being a lesbian has helped me in so many ways, helped me grow as a student, helped me be so many different things. And so, if you cut the classes, you're taking, you're taking an outlet away from kids like me, kids like me. I've never taken any of her classes, but I did the theater program, and that was the best thing that's changed my life, changed my life completely. I had so many things going on, I was, I was, whatever, and Ms. Patterson, this group that I've come, like Molly said... And Ms. Patterson, this group that I've come, like Molly said, I have been my best friends, and they, she helped me. Because she, because she said, she said, "Be who you are and don't be afraid to show it." Meaning, you can be whoever you want to be, you can be some person that you don't know, and whatever. You are here to learn, to create. She's helped you, she's helped me create and become who I want to be. I know I'm straying away from my script here, but now my three minutes are now up. According to the stopwatch. But I just wanted to say that, because a teacher's a teacher, no matter how small.
Thank you, Molly. All right. I'm gonna pause for a second. We still have more people to speak. Is it agreed that the Board of Ed would like to do another 15 minutes?
Do we need to make a motion?
Well, if I have a sense, I'll just say, absent objection, we'll do it.
Absolutely.
Absent objection, we'll do it. All right, let's start with the young lady on the floor.
Thank you for calling me young, like somebody.
It's all relative.
Ms., could you, could you just check that microphone?
It doesn't seem to be working.
All right, hit the button right in the middle.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Right up to it.
Right up to it.
There you go. All right. That's what it is.
My name is Janine Vialante. I am the mother of a senior at Avon High School, who is in the theater program. And very much like Caroline over here, he is in the special education. He is on the autism spectrum. And it was Jill Patterson in her acting class that encouraged my son to do what he does. To, they accepted him for his quirks. They accepted him for whatever he did, and gave him the courage to go on, to go try out. His first audition was a disaster. And Ms. Patterson walked up to him and said, she believes in him. Today, my son is a senior at Avon High, planning to go to college for theater. And his college essay was all about how Ms. Patterson changed his life. That's all I want to say. You can't get rid of a program. These kids sometimes don't have any other place to go. They're not accepted in the sports, they're not accepted in the other places. They're accepted in the theater group, because everybody accepts everybody, no matter what they have. And that's all I have to say.
Can you do one on the, what looks you do straight in the back?
I have to stand up to be seen by.
And your name is?
My name is Wendy Haller. I am a parent of an eighth grader at the middle school and a fifth grader at Thompson Brook. I've also been the producer for the, here producing for the last four years for the middle school and Thompson Brook Theater Productions. I'm here on behalf of the 75 students that participated the first year, the 82 that participated the second year, this is at Thompson Brook, the 65 and the 60 of the two other years. The middle school had 67 last year and 45 this year. Last year, the beginning of last year, there was no theater after-school musical. But because it was such a passion that started at Thompson Brook for the theater program, the kids were so excited to get to the middle school, to be able to take those electives, to be able to continue with what they found, to continue on a path, because this is the time of discovery. This is when they're figuring out what they're passionate about. They tried soccer, they tried baseball, they tried basketball, they tried art, whatever. This is something. And I have to say, a quote from a parent who is also a teacher in this district, said to me, after her seventh grader finished a theater class, "My son will never get up on stage, that is not who he is, but he was terrified to speak in public. But after taking his theater elective, he is now not afraid to speak in public, because he learned how to present himself from doing a theater class in front of an audience. And that will last him for the rest of his life." And that is something else theater brings to children, to brings to our community. When we think of teaching to the whole child, yes, we need science, we need social studies, we need math. But to teach to the whole child, you need to teach all senses, whether it's speaking, acting, singing, writing, drawing, calculating. And theater is part of being, part of the whole child. It's that imagination you lose as you grow up. But some children grow up needing that. They need that part of their life where they can express themselves. And giving students the possibility of doing that throughout their day when there's so much other pressure to perform in, so many other academic areas, that is a release for them. And I'd hate to see that taken away, especially for my two students, my children, who are so passionate about theater. This is my son, this is who he is. And that's why I continue, I work a full-time job, I'm a, you know, full-time mom, but I've produced, I'm on my fifth show with the schools, because I knew my kids were coming up to the high school. And you know, I can't see that taken away from them, because now I'm gonna have to go elsewhere. And I'm, I don't want to have to do that. We moved to Avon for the schools. We moved because of everything it offered, to them. And I'd hate for them to have to go somewhere else to get what our public schools should be offering them. I went to Marco before my son entered seventh grade, and I said, "We need to bridge the gap." Thompson Brook has a play, the high school has a play. We need to bridge the gap. I wrote, he said, "No, we can't do it, we can't do it, it's not really available." I wrote letters, all the other parents whose students were in the play, they wrote letters. He bridged the gap. I'm thrilled you're still gonna have a musical at night. But now that gap is gonna end, and it's gonna stop. How can we let that happen? Our students learn what they want to major in when they go to college in high school. I mean, they may not end up graduating and working in that field. I was a journalism major, and now I teach preschool. But you, when you're 18, it's so hard to decide what you're gonna do with the rest of your life, so you have to build on your previous experiences. And that comes from your high school experience. So I hope and pray that you will give these students who need this outlet, whether they want to be on stage, where they have to give a presentation, where they need to talk to a customer as they're bringing them out at the Stopman Shop, the capability to be able to present themselves. And that's what theater will do.
I think we hit the three-minute point, I apologize. Mr. Molly, would you like to make some comments directed to the...
I'd like to first thank people for coming out and expressing your opinions. There are many times this room is empty. And I am thankful that you came out. I do want to clarify something that I think is important. We have no intent on eliminating the entire theater program. This administration made a decision three years ago to expand the theater program, which at that point was an after-school, what I call a non-athletic curricular program, that had stipends that paid people to run that group. We're continuing with that. The, at that time, we built in courses at the high school, some of which our students and parents have already referenced. Simultaneous to that, we established courses at the middle school, and we used one position split between the two schools. Our hope was that by offering structured classes at the middle school, it would create a feeder program to the high school. Based on the information that was provided and the recommendations that I had to consider, the courses are what is being eliminated because they were undersubscribed. They had under 10 students. In some, in some cases, some of the sections had five or six students. This is an enormous challenge. We want to, I want to keep everything. We have a number that we have to stay within. But I want you as students to know that your central administration cares very much about maintaining theater. I'll go on a slight tangent for a minute, because the saving grace for both of my own daughters was theater. One was on the stage, and one was the techie. Because they're just very different. I, I understand the impact. The fact of, the data that was presented to me showed class sizes so small that I couldn't, we couldn't no longer rationalize that in the face of the type of reduction that we're faced with. So what we're simply saying is we're reverting to the previous model, where hundreds of students can be involved. And quite frankly, I commend people who started the initiative at Thompson Brook as an after-school program, which then feeds to the middle school, and it will continue to feed to the high school. So I hope you understand the point I'm clarifying. It's just the courses that were offered didn't have, and they don't, have the projected enrollment to be able to run. Unless the Board of Education sees within, it's appropriate to have courses that are that small. There are other people that aren't in the room, and we know, we're all on this together. But there are some people outside this room that would look and say, "My God, how could you run these courses? They should have 25 in them."
Gary, speaking of people outside this room, I just got a text that there's many people waiting out there and out there. I don't know if, if...
I don't, I don't, I'm just, I'm offering the clarification, because as I'm listening, and I'm not defer to your chair, but I just wanted to clarify that point, because that may be a question in people's minds.
Can they, can we invite them to the dance?
I don't know. I'm sort of, knock the wall down. It's a theater thing. We're a tech, let's just take it that way.
The argument is the low numbers, that's one of the things you didn't show on the spreadsheet. Maybe that would help as well. One way or the other, you'd like to see those data points to see what actual numbers you're getting.
Okay, let me just sort of thank you, I appreciate the comment. Apparently, we've got people outside the room.
Come sit up front.
I would say, come sit up front. But I'm, we're still gonna take some more speakers. So there was a group of young ladies.
Houston, is there a maximum capacity for this room?
There is, I just don't know what it is.
You gotta watch.
All right, you gotta leave room for people to exit. All right.
Houston, we also need to take a show of hands of who's here in support of theater.
Okay, you can do that. Right. Why don't, can we just have a show of hands? How many people are here to speak in favor of the theater program? Okay. How many here are, are here to speak in favor, excuse me, in favor of the Student Assistance Center? All right? Fair number there, too. Okay, all right. So as long as we leave sort of space so that people can get to the doors, because if, God forbid, an emergency happens, we have to move relatively quickly. So let's try and see if we can take some people in groups. The group of young ladies down here, I think you offered to volunteer to speak for your group?
Yeah, Anne.
Anne?
There's two of us that want to.
All right, well, let's start off with one. Let's go.
Yeah, Erin.
All right. And this time, I will hit the start button, I forgot last time. All right, your name is?
My name is Erin Sutter. I'm a senior here at Avon High School. And we're all here to speak on behalf of the volleyball team, specifically the cuts to the developmental team, or the freshman team, as we now call it. I played volleyball all four years, and it's really been an immense part of my high school experience. It's changed my life. The team has been a lifeline for me, and for so many other girls who come in freshman year not wanting to play soccer, not wanting to do field hockey, but wanting to do something different, something new, something that's really fun. And the team is really like a family. And we have the developmental team, because a lot of, because the majority of girls who come to play have never played before, because there's not many options for, under the high school level, to play volleyball. There's not, there's a program at the middle school, but it's rather young and underdeveloped. And there's not many other options, extracurricular, for girls to do. So a lot of people come in with little to no skill. So that's why we have the developmental team, so they can really learn the basics of the sport, which is a great sport. But you need to learn the basics before you get thrown into a game, because it is a little difficult. So we're just speaking on that behalf, that we think it, even though it's rather small, and it's kind of hard to go after all the powerful messages that were given tonight, but it is really a great program, and we're one of like, we're one of the best sports in the school. And we've done really well the past couple of years, and the program is really advancing. We're going farther into states and conference tournaments every year. And we think we're doing really well. And if the developmental team were to be cut, then it would kind of all fall through the cracks, because we wouldn't have the new freshmen getting, having their skills developed to move on to the next levels. So we'd be underdeveloped as a team, because kids who come in to play like soccer and basketball and football and field hockey and other sports like that, they have experience before high school. But volleyball is kind of new and special to the high school experience, and that's when you first learn it. So we'd just like to say hi, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Apparently, there's a volleyball contingency, sorry. Or contingent, I apologize. Your name is?
My name is Jordan Blackington. I'm a junior. I'm really bad at public speaking, so it's not good.
You're doing fine, so keep going.
Almost every single girl here started on that developmental team. So it's really hard for us to think about it without it, like our program. Our coach, the developmental one, is absolutely amazing. She's just such a wonderful person to be around. And we all start there. And every year, when you come in, there's a summer camp we do, where you get to work with girls from like sixth grade until the incoming freshman. We're so excited to be there. And it's one of the most popular programs here, like the freshman teams, because we do have to make cuts, even though that stinks, but we do. And I think there's only one other team that has to make cuts, and it's Girls Lacrosse, because that's popular too. But we have to make those cuts, and you get the girls who just absolutely thrive. They love it, the coach gets them going. And they've never had a record less than 16 and 4, which is really impressive for a freshman team coming in. And it just makes it such a stronger, like, I'm like finding friends. These are my best friends, and I made them starting on the developmental team. And it's just, I don't know, it's like a support system. I love the freshmen who are on the developmental team this year, and like, I still talk to those girls. They were so cute to watch, it's like, like even like their first game, it was pretty rough to watch. But by the last game, they got it. Like, they understood, and they're definitely ready for JV. But asking girls to come from eighth grade and get tossed into a JV game, it's a lot. Because volleyball is growing, it's thriving, and I mean, we're supposed to be, we're predicted to be an extremely good team going into the tournament next year. And having that support of the freshman girls, like, we make families, like big sister, little sister. It's big families, we are all gonna be together. And it's just, losing all of those girls who just like, kind of make it dull. The more the merrier, it's just so much fun having those girls, and I know they thrive. My sister's gonna come in, and she needs that program, so.
All right. Young man in black, start back there. Your name is?
My name is Cameron. I'm a transgender freshman here at Avon High School, and I'd just like to speak on behalf of the theater courses and Ms. Patterson. I came to Avon High Schools, High School at, in, in the middle of the year. I came too late to be in any musicals and any plays. I wasn't really supposed to take the theater classes, but the classes that I wanted to take were full, so I did. And I don't have family support for being transgender, so school is my only safe place. And not to trash Avon or anything, but like, the way that it is, it's not the most supportive place. But my theater class was and has been my number-one place of acceptance. Every day, sorry, when I had to deal with, sorry, people treating me badly for something that I have no control over, I was able to vent about it to Ms. Patterson and to my whole class. I was able to get group hugs every A-day. And I was able to cry without feeling bad about it, or feeling like my masculinity was being questioned. Had it, I'm in crew, I'm in rowing crew, I am not able to be in any plays right now. And thinking about it, I might not be able to my whole high school career, because I am very into athletics, but I'm also very into theater. So the classes really balanced it out for me. And I'd just really like to say that without Ms. Patterson and without my theater class, I would not be succeeding and flourishing the way that I am right now in Avon High School. And yeah, that's really all.
All right. Why don't we grab the young lady all the way in the back? That seems to be the... That seems to be the spot where I can see someone particularly well, so everybody seems to be fighting for her. Your name is?
Elizabeth Sagata. First of all, I wanna express my support for all these wonderful programs, and I wanna acknowledge that you're in a really difficult position, I get it. I'm a public school educator myself, I understand how budgets work, and I understand this year is probably more challenging than most. Um, I'm a big component of the theater program and the Student Assistance Center, I said in a couple of meetings prior, um, to the year about that, but I'm really here to express my support for JV golf and tennis. I'm gonna be brief, and I'm just gonna say that it's really not a big line item, I understand that everything counts in a budget like this, but I just really question, especially after the outpouring of support that those programs were shown December, why the athletic department couldn't find other places to make some small cuts, rather than cutting the program wholesale, similar to, um, freshman volleyball. There is a big group of kids coming up, I know at least for golf, um, who are interested in playing JV golf. I understand the argument that there might be room for them on varsity, my understanding is only five kids get to play in a varsity match, though, and that there really isn't room for anybody else when they're playing, so I don't think that's a feasible solution. I can't speak to tennis, but I know for golf that isn't. And I know that, um, people have expressed this thought to you before, but when you factor in the pay-to-play money, I actually think you're saving very little. I understand that pay-to-play money doesn't go to the athletics budget, but it does go into the overall pot, so I just really urge you to reconsider that decision.
Alright. Uh, let's, alright, alright. My, my secretary tells me that you've had your hand up for a long time, come on up, young lady. And your name is?
My name is Nicholas Martin. Now, first off, I, I understand that this is an extremely difficult decision that you have to make, like, no matter what happens, someone's kid somewhere is going to be negatively impacted by a budget change, but I just wanna come here and show my support for the theater program, and I can say that many of the kids here are here to support theater because of the classes and because of the teaching that Ms. Patterson offers, and the skills that one learns within Ms. Patterson's classes are applicable in so many other fields other than acting. And these skills, these skills were used directly by other students to get into other highly competitive colleges and programs offered at those colleges. For example, we have one senior this year, her name's Dingle Fletcher, and she applied for the, one of the most competitive stage management programs offered in the country at DePaul University, and because of the expertise and skills and experience she learned within the classes that Ms. Patterson offers, she got into that program. Also, last year, we had a senior named Jamie McNeil, and because of the expertise in lighting and sound and the help and guidance from Ms. Patterson, he was accepted in the University of Southern California, and his theater experience in the classes he took and the time he spent with Ms. Patterson played a direct role in his acceptance there as well. And as stated earlier by Christian DeDoy, Hunter Monroe did get, received that scholarship because of his involvement in theater, and all of these students received all these great achievements because of the experience, the expertise, and the learning that is provided by Ms. Patterson. And without Ms. Patterson, it's not just the theater programs that are necessary for her, but also the classes. I can't think of another person who is more dedicated and more just experienced in theater to teach these classes. In fact, she offers so much to the table for us, she is just a wonderful teacher, and her skills and her classes are just so useful in so many other fields than acting. Like, as a businessman, the skill, the interpersonal skills that she develops help you to make any proposals you make to other people stronger. As a lawyer, you can, you can present your case much more persuasively. As a doctor, the ability, you can talk to a patient, and the ability that you can connect with that patient improves because of the interpersonal skills that you learn and develop within the classes that Ms. Patterson teaches. Like, I just think that cutting her would be a serious disservice to the potential for success that many students who are planning on going into many highly competitive fields offer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, who've we got? Uh, let's see, I haven't picked anyone in the back, unless I, one, the young lady in the pink, all the way in the back. Yes, you're not allowed to step on anyone.
I'm apologizing for the-
There you go, I'm sure, I'm sure you are.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, and if anyone who has spoken would like to leave, I certainly encourage that, so there's more air. Not that I wanna be rude, uh, anyway, go ahead, your name is?
Michelle Sherbaco. I have a son, Jack, who's, um, in eighth grade and about to enter the high school next year, and I'm just second, seconding what, um, Elizabeth said about JV golf. Um, I think that it's a very small line item to, to stop the feeder pool for the varsity golf team. I know personally, 10 to 15 incoming eighth graders that are interested in JV golf, and they won't be able to play. I understand that, um, possibly the varsity golf coach would let them be on the varsity team, but if they're out to matches, there's no one to practice with the JV team. So with 10 to 15 incoming eighth graders and the pay-to-play, as well as some of the kids who are already on JV golf right now, I really don't think that, I think with the cost of that, you're looking at under $2,000 to stop a JV program from developing golf players for varsity. So I urge you to really strongly reconsider.
Thank you, Mrs. Sherbaco. Uh, we'll run a couple more, uh, young lady down here, you're raising your hand so vigorously, I think you might dislocate your shoulder. And your name is?
Anika Mathias.
Anika Mathias.
So I'm a freshman, and I'm currently in Ms. Patterson's Intro to Theater class, and I was in both the play and in the upcoming musical, and I just wanted to talk about how beneficial the program has been to me. And I also believe that cutting the classes is going to have a negative effect on the productions as a whole, and just the theater program. Um, the classes provide opportunities for students during the day to, to express themselves. I have, I have a lot of friends who are athletes, like, like Pam said, um, athletes can take theater classes during school, but, um, but go on to play, to do sports during the day. Um, I know Avon is looking to create well-rounded students, and I feel like eliminating the theater classes would not allow this. Now, I know that the theater classes have a very small class size, but I would urge you to look at the numbers in a different way. This year, we had 30 students in the, making up the theater department. Next year, we'll have 45. Now, that's still small compared to like, the over 100 students acquired, but that's a 50% increase, and I think if we expand the theater programs in all of, throughout all of the levels of Avon schools, we will get an increase in theater classes. The program is very young, Ms. Patterson has only been here for six years, but if she is let go and the theater classes are ending, I am certain that the theater program will begin to decrease in quality. Ms. Patterson has led us, has led the theater program to catch up to some of the other surrounding schools, because they have really good theater, and I think that we're catching up and we're making progress, and if Ms. Patterson is let go, that will all go to waste. Theater is so important to people, I know, um, my, some other students mentioned alumni who are going into the arts. There are so many alumni of the theater program that are, maybe are not going into the arts, but are, that are benefited from these theater classes. Did you know that, um, the average SAT score of, like, theater, theater students get an average 65%, not 65%, sorry, 65 more points on the SAT than the average student, and 35% on the left, on the verbal, and 35% on the math score? And I think that's beneficial whether you're going into math, whether you're going into theater, it's just helpful. Um, and I know in Ms. Patterson's Intro to Theater class, we do, um, assignments where we have to read, we have to read a play, we have to, um, write character descriptions, we have to write a summary, that's improving our reading comprehension, that's improving our character analysis, our literary analysis, and I think those are skills that will carry with, that will carry with us for the rest of our life. Theater encourages tolerance and empathy, we have students from all different walks of life, from athletes to just diehard theater nerds, to just everyone, and it's so important that this program is, continues in high school. Thank you.
One more, and then we'll see where we are, the young lady in the red in the back.
Megan Mayo, um, I have a junior and I have an eighth grader, um, and I wanna say I probably should've taken some theater classes to help me through tonight, so I've got a piece of paper in front of me, um, but I'm here to ask you to reevaluate your decision to eliminate the SAC Student Assistance Center and the tutor who provides the services to the students. The Student Assistance Center, like Jen Mayo eloquently said, is a sense of community for the school, it's a place where kids can go, um, go there maybe sporadically or go there on a regular basis, and it provides that safe environment that they feel free to ask these questions and get the help they need. Um, I won't go into all the ways it helps, because I think I've done it before and save some time here, but, um, I would like to say there is a new model coming out, and it won't be revealed till May, and my question to you is, how can we eliminate something that you haven't even seen was gonna replace it? I find it disturbing. You're gonna eliminate a program that's working and successful, that has an excellent, um, tutor who's, teacher who's helping students and working with, and working with the other teachers to create a unit, we've got a, a student, support teacher, a teacher and student working together as a unit, and you have something that's successfully working, but you're gonna get rid of it and replace it with something which you're gonna see next May, in May, and maybe it'll be good, maybe it won't be good.
Actually, I think, just to let you know, I think we're gonna be hearing tonight about the details of that, but-
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. Um, I would like to say that what I saw through the last meetings, and I've been attending these meetings and looking at, on the internet and at minutes and things, it says that students we placed, um, according to their needs in credit-bearing classes. Now, Student Assistance Center is for students to help them with the courses they're currently on, not to create new ones for them to go to. These, um, courses will go on their records and be in their transcripts. My son who goes to SAC does not need another course to take, he needs help with the courses he's taking currently. SAC provides him with that, um, individualized attention, um, help and allows him to complete his schoolwork, and also, um, helps him integrate study skills which he learns through SAC and through Miss Goldie into what's relevant in the work he's doing currently. Those that have created the model have not surveyed the Avon High School staff. I don't know why their input has not been taken into consideration, considering they're working with the children, um, or the learners. I would like to say also, the new, um, the new model, when I've come to other meetings, did not know how many members actually were in SAC. I think we should get more information on, um, what's going on with SAC, before making changes to it. I suggest that we table the elimination of SAC and the tutor until we have some further in, further information, maybe we'll hear some more tonight, um, before voting on it, because it is a relevant part of the school and a, a place of community for the students.
Thank you. Just, for the frame of information to let you know how the budgeting process works, is each major department and each of the schools is responsible for presenting their budget to the central administration, and the budgets that are being reflected as presented by the superintendent, and he can certainly jump in if he wants to, are the result of cuts proposed under the leadership team of each building and major department. So, just to let you know, it's not being done in a vacuum, because that's not the way we work. Alright, I would, I would try the, the members of the Board of Education, we still have a, a number of people who wanna talk, I assume, because they seem to be sitting on their, their, their seats with their hands poised, I've, I've taken a liberty with your, your 30 minutes that you gave me, went a little bit over. What is the preference of the board? Do you wanna listen to some more, or do you think we've heard enough?
I prefer to listen to some more.
Out of respect to the people in the audience, I think we owe them that.
Okay, so we'll extend-
Can we focus on people that have topics to discuss that we haven't listened to?
Okay, we can, we can do that, so why don't we, we'll extend for another 15 minutes. Does anyone want to talk about not theater, um-
Volleyball.
Not volleyball, and not Student Assistance Center? Is there anyone who's come, who wishes to raise that? Alright, let's start with the young lady back there. And, and I'm afraid that I don't recall your name, but I should know your name.
Linda Moses.
Linda Moses, yes, thank you. I'm really very bad with, they call it the Rockefeller problem, because he never remembered anyone's names either.
I don't know if this is actually working, I can tell. I wanted to just raise a small point, I'm Linda Moses, and, uh, my point is that I think it's really difficult for the public, the, you know, people are interested and they wanna speak, and at this point, the way things go in meetings, we have the choice of either speaking before getting all the information, which sometimes makes our comments seem uninformed, or speaking after the vote has happened, in which case our comments are meaningless. And so I am really thrilled to see the level of support for various programs and various, um, staff. I, I love seeing this room fall, um, but I really, I really would like to have a process that, you know, that doesn't give me the choice between being uninformed or being too late, and I don't know if there's any way to consider that.
I will put on my thinking cap and see if I can come up with something, and we'll tackle it that way, it may not actually work for this evening, but we may come up with something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and apparently, everybody likes being young.
Absolutely. Ted Mathias, Anika's father, you can guess where my sympathies lie with respect to the theater, but I just wanted to make a quick plug for JV tennis. Uh, there are a lot of us in the community who are very focused on giving opportunities to tennis players as well, and so for all the reasons that were laid out with respect to JV golf, I hope you'll consider, uh, JV tennis in tandem with JV golf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Next question, someone have anything that's not covered? Alright, go ahead, you're closest. Your name, yes?
Ben. I'm Ben Berman, and I'm a senior at Avon High.
Pleasure to meet you, Ben.
Alright. I think we need to talk about how this isn't a permanent solution, we can keep cutting things, and next year, we're gonna come here, have a board meeting, and discuss the exact same thing about, well, our salary and maintenance costs are going up, we're not getting more money from the state, we gotta cut more stuff, and then from the state, next year, next year, next year, and this isn't a solution, we need, we need to try something else. I think we need to try to increase revenues, and there are a lot of ways you can do this, you can increase parking fees, you could ask for organizations to fundraise even more, it's just, the approach we're taking now is not sustainable, and I really think we need to, like I said, increase revenue.
Yes.
Ben, I will personally be your campaign manager, if you decide you wanna run for governor.
Just so everyone knows, and it probably means that I'll never have higher political aspirations, is I think everyone recognizes the educational funding system in Connecticut needs substantial work, if not major revision, um, and that's something that's beyond the scope of what we can actually do. Alright, people who wanna talk about sort of a new topic? Alright, young lady there?
I'm sort of lying, but-
Sort of lying.
That was honest.
More honest than most. Your name is?
Uh, my name is Melissa Otis, but my daughter is Jordan Blackington, and she was up here talking about volleyball, um, and I'm not going to just speak about volleyball, because in general, with, you know, whether it's theater, volleyball, golf, tennis, we're really talking about something that is very important to kids. And, as I said to my daughter when we look at colleges, if you're gonna be happy there, you're gonna do well. So, what's happening right now is you're hearing from a lot of kids who are really unhappy about what's going on, and, and by all means, I know that sports aren't necessarily high on everyone's list, but my question is, well, one, I don't understand where that $6,000 comes from volleyball, because we're not saving on a bus, they all take the same bus, we are losing $2,000- because we're not saving on a bus, they all take the same bus, we are losing $2,000 for pay to play, we have one coach and a referee, the custodians can't leave early because they're going to be there for the rest of the teams. So I'm not really seeing where that line is coming into play and how we're actually saving that much. But that said, obviously, it does have a cost, as does everything else. And the question is, have we looked at fundraising? Because there are other schools around Connecticut that do that. I just gave $50 to my nephew for his baseball team. They have raised almost $15,000 from the kids on the baseball team. They have a fundraising site, and they send it out just like anything else. And no, do I think this is a great solution? Because I do agree, these aren't frills that we're cutting. So, you know, we're at a point now where we're cutting things that mean something to kids. So frills are one thing, you know, when you look in your house, you go, oh God, my bills are going up, what should I cut? You look at cutting out the frills. We've already done that. So what's left? And again, what does happen next year? What if the kids lose next year? So, and 100% agree with him, that we need to find other solutions for things and not just cuts. And where does money come from? So I get that most likely, you know what, the sports aren't going to get the attention. I'm not going to be naive and think they're all going to say, oh yeah, you know what, let's put the sports back in because all the kids showed up. You know, this whole group here, these girls, they get together year round. They absolutely love, they go out to breakfast together. That's how close they are. And what you may not understand with volleyball program is, they have 11 seniors this year. Their coach is going to have to actually start cutting girls that have been a part of this program, who actually deserve to be there and have put in the effort. They go and they play club volleyball, they do all that stuff, and I'm sure there are other kids in their sports doing the same thing. The younger kids, we have parents who have already signed up for camps for their kids for freshman year. So they're paid out $400 or more to attend camp because their kids really want to come and play volleyball. And now they're thinking, oh my God, I just wasted that money because all these kids aren't going to get to play anymore, because he has limited spots. And he's going to have to cut girls in order to actually maintain his program, because there's no room for them right now. And they do have a solid group of girls. So I guess my question is, what do we need to do to take a look at these other fundraising opportunities that other schools are doing? Because we're not the only town that has problems. We are one of the towns that other towns look at and say, how do you guys have so many problems, given the wealth in your town? Which is sad.
Well, thank you. The gentleman in the pink?
Pink?
Salmon.
I don't know, I'd be a buzzkill. My name's...
I thought maybe if it was like cherry.
Welcome to Henry.
Everybody wants to get rid of the guy from Goshen. My name's Henry Moore. You can't tell from my uniform, but I'm the manager of Specialty Transportation. This town falls under my purview. Recently suffered a real tragic loss of a school bus driver, you're all familiar with the incident about a month ago. And I came here to commend your staff, in particular Superintendent Mala, for his quick reaction and his assistance. It was invaluable. I mean, I thought I was prepared for everything and anything that my job could throw at me. I deal with complaints and criticism as you do all the time. And I go where things are broken and they're not running on time, and I fix those things. But this was overwhelming. He showed up with his team, with Donna, Miles, Tiffany, Todd, I can't remember the other social service worker. But they just didn't comfort the troops, and when they left, they didn't know that the driver had actually perished in the crash. So I wasn't sure how the buses were going to roll, we were doing all kinds of things to get spares up here. Anyhow, I won't go through all those details, but to say that, I overlooked a lot of the comfort and counseling and just things that Superintendent Mala just offered and was generous and compassionate. So I thought you all should know that. Thank you.
All right. I seem to have a habit of picking people in the back to make them walk up. And your name is?
My name is Hannah Davies, I'm a senior at Avon High School. And I came here with the theater people to talk about theater, but I'm not going to, because I think you've heard enough. But from what I was hearing, it seems like a lot of the issues people have with having these programs cut is losing the support that freshmen and other incoming students get when they come here, which can be kind of hard to find if you're like a little freshman. And so I think, rather than cutting it, rather than cutting all of these programs, it might be easier to reinterpret them, and maybe approach them in a different manner. Like, I know that a lot of theater kids and other students who've done that thing, like, are struggling with public speaking skills, so it might be easier to bring up a public speaking class or something like that, which you could employ Ms. Patterson with and help with the student assistants. I don't know much about them, and honestly, there's a lack of advertisement with that as well, which I think, if you bring more of that in, it will allow more students to come to. And just overall, like, I'm not on the Board of Education, obviously, and I don't know much about how to run a high school. But I think, maybe instead of just erasing all these programs from the school, it might be better to bring them like into something more similar and just still allow all these different, like, moving parts to go on that are helping kids across the school to succeed and just do well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The opportunity of lateral thought. All right, who else? One hand over here. Yes, you, green shirt. And your name is?
I'm Lori Valencourt Pottsley. My daughter's going to be a freshman next year. You already know how I feel about the SAC program, so I'm not going to talk about that. There are questions that still have to be answered as it relates to the model that's being proposed, and anyway. I just wanted to point out, the district server was down this past weekend, and we all know that most families in the community were away for the spring recess. And the information about the positions being cut was provided to the community just over 24 hours ago. The community needs more time to process this information and then provide input. I implore the members of the board to exercise good conscience and good judgment, and avoid voting on the budget as it is proposed tonight, and allow the community more time to process and then provide input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've got just a little more time. Can we do one more person? Young man over here.
Would we please talk about theater?
You can talk about theater. I will be happy to say that's still in order, because you're number 23, and I think we're just about at the end.
So I'm Jacob Picard, and I take the Intro to Theater class. Before I came to Avon High School, I didn't know how people would accept me as a student or as a community member of the LGBTQ+ community. And getting to meet Ms. Patterson and take her class and be able to talk with her, she's helped me this year, and with like, anything that you need to talk to Ms. Patterson about, she'll always be there for you. So if you cut the theater classes, then you're not only cutting the theater classes and the kids who want to take theater because they can't take it after school, you're cutting a friend to many students, because Ms. Patterson is not only a teacher, she's a friend to many of us, and she's always willing to help.
Okay. Sir Pity, we'll take one more, number 24. Young lady in the front.
All right, I won't bother standing up.
Well, just as long as you speak up, I'm sorry, what's your name?
I think the big elephant in the room is not...
You just say your name first, please.
Felice Wilson, thank you. The big elephant in the room is not only the cuts, but how to generate the revenue. And of course, the big revenue generator is the tax side of it. And bringing up, and I don't know what the tax proposal is, because it wasn't released with the cuts. I don't know, I haven't seen it, maybe I'm just totally unaware of it too, because I could be. I've been a bit out of the loop, and I apologize. But I know you have a tough decision to make, and I would just encourage you to just not be afraid, considering what is being handed down to us from the state. We are, we want to keep our taxes low, however, if we're going to keep our state taxes low, the money's got to come from somewhere to support our children locally. And if it's not going to come from the state, we can't gut what's going to happen to the kids. We have money in our town, a lot of parents pay private tutors, they pay for extracurricular activities for their kids to go to sports and do a lot of activities that most poor, impoverished towns, their parents can't afford to put food on the table. And we're afraid to raise our taxes to provide programming in the school for our children. I find that sad. And on top of that, you know, I'm definitely not a Democrat, I am a Republican, and I'm a compassionate Republican, and when it's time to take care of our children, we need to take care of our children. That's it.
I'm going to give you the opportunity to place a plug for May 1st, 7:00 PM, there is an Avon Town Budget Town Meeting, talking about the budget. So if you have an interest, I would suggest that you show up for that at 7:00.
But the budget is set already?
Houston?
Yes?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I just speak for one moment?
Sure.
I want to make sure that the audience is clear with the backdrop that this budget had to be built upon. I agree that revenue is the problem. We have a revenue problem in our state. We, as a Board of Education, I am the agent of the Board of Education, we can't generate revenue and keep that. The revenue goes all to the town. We are simply the biggest department in town. While I know, at least since I've been here and I've been in two other districts, the conversation always seems to be about two separate budgets. The town budget and the Board of Education budget. I want to dispel that. There's only one budget. It's the aggregate budget when you put the two of them together. And that may sound like a very simple point, but there still may be some people who don't understand that. So any revenue that comes in goes directly to the entire town, and then the town has other boards that determine how that revenue can or will be used. This particular budget didn't, it didn't give me any great pleasure to try to put this one together. And I know, I know you know that. The tricky part is, what I don't think people are aware of, is that we were, I was, provided a directive that we must comply with the 2.5% soft cap legislation. If you go Google that, and I believe if many of you get my communications, I actually put that in there. That's why we had to reduce to the level we did to conform with that legislation. And it was brought to my attention today, and I'm going to publicly apologize, I put that the law became effective October 1st, 2017. We didn't get there yet. I meant '16. That law is still in place. And that was put in, in a very subtle way, that's called an implementer bill, that had no public discussion at our state Capitol. It just gets cast upon a community. So we were, we, me particularly, I received a directive, you will not go over the 2.5% soft cap legislation. Let me just do a little quick math. To maintain the current staffing that we had, or have, this year, moving forward, and it goes to Ben's point, I needed 3.3% new money. But I was told you can't exceed 2.5. So I already started in a negative position. That's why this is so difficult to do. And we're trying desperately to maintain. Over the past five years, I can point to things like we've added 23 courses in the program of studies here at the high school. I'm sitting on the verge of having to recommend eliminating those. We're the ones who put them in, because we knew that the program of studies had to expand, to be competitive. We're in a horrific financial situation. Yes, the community, when you look at all indicators, has the ability to pay. That's the key terminology. Not everyone shares that and says, let's spend it on education. Unfortunately, that's the way it is. And if you look statistically across the state, some 72% average residents in a community do not have children accessing public schools, no matter what community you go to. So I'm not throwing the crying towel out. We're working diligently to preserve as many things as we can in the face of directives and declining revenues that we're going to really have to be creative in the next few years in this state. And I know, you know, many of you that follow the state news, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I could just add a few more things. There are some things that are unusual for boards of education, and I harp on it, and younger people won't care as much, but the older people will go, oh my God. If we blow through our budget, the Board of Education of every community has personal liability to make that up. So if we spend a million dollars more than we have, then we look around the table and say, how much are you ponying up? I'm a little short this month, can you help more? So one of our firm guidelines to the superintendent is we try to make sure that we don't blow through our budget.
It's not an option.
Well, it's not an option, because people then won't serve on the Board of Education and be a bag for a million dollars.
There's a whole, right, I mean, what I can say is I appreciate having the room filled. I think one of our last speakers said that. Unfortunately, we're having the conversations, and we're all on the same team. And I don't know what the solution is long term, because I can't forecast what our state will do. But we won't have a state budget come July 1st. There's no way. So my hope is that when the state budget is finalized, and my prediction will be October, that we're not hit with midstream reductions. That's nearly impossible. When you run a school district, I call it a train. When the train leaves the station, it's very hard to stop that. What do you do? You look at a group of parents, and I'm just going to pick a hypothetical grade, so don't quote me on the grade, it's hypothetical. What do you do? You look at the parents of all second graders in both schools and say, oh, we have to do a midstream cut, so we have to take a teacher away at second grade. It's impossible, you can't do that. And the fixed costs that we manage are gigantic compared to the actual amount of money we do have control over. I like the idea of fundraising. There are some legal issues with, I can't promote fundraising directly, nor can the board, but there are groups that can.
But if we do something outside, and we have our private donation, will it go there?
It could do that. You could direct that. And the board could accept that. The board actually gives me the authority to accept donations. I want to leave you with one other point. And it's included in the presentation, if you picked up one of the little pieces, or it was in the communication that I released. A budget is an estimate of the revenues and expenditures. And to make my point, and for any fiscalier, to make my point, I really don't know what's going to happen by August. Enrollments may shift to a certain point that we might be able to drop a section. Now all of a sudden, I pick up a certain dollar amount. That could be used for other things. It's because it's always moving. Every single day, and at least every single week, our budget flexes. It moves, because something else happens. Something came in cheaper, something came in more expensive. But we have to cover our contractual obligations. So I, you know, I can only commend all of you for coming out to share your concerns and being actively involved. You know, we hope that we find a resolution to a very difficult issue. You know, I'm always faced with, okay, if this doesn't go, and here's the total dollar amount, the board's going to look at me and say, okay, Superintendent, where's it going to come from? There's not many places to go. So, yes, ma'am?
Quick question. Your 2.5% soft cap could increase if your special ed costs increased?
We've already done that. The special ed is excluded from the 2.5% cap. Also excluded is... Also excluded is debt service, also excluded are arbitrated labor awards. There are some other things excluded for it. So in fact, if you were to take the total amount that we increased in our budget, is higher than a 2.5 percent. But on the allowable items, it's in fact 2.5 percent. The problem is, when the governor came back after we had approved our budget, which is why we're having this second meeting, he chopped out roughly $739,000 in what revenue we expected to get that we're not going to get. There are roughly 40 towns, and we're one of them, who are getting dramatically less. Now, we're expecting that we will dodge the bullet of taking one-third of the teacher pensions. If we don't, you know, we're, we're, we're in serious trouble, because that's not part of our budget, and that was the reason. We've always paid our teachers well, because, you know, we don't pay the administrators so well. We pay the teachers well, because we think that's where the rubber meets the road. So.
I will, may I just respond to one other thing? And I'm sorry, I can't remember who said it. It was a question about why I didn't release the, I'll say, the tax information. Once that is set, and that's been set, I am prohibited by state law to have any conversation about that. The law goes as far as saying that I, as the Superintendent of a school district, and my colleagues across the state do the same thing, we cannot even send a reminder of the date of the referendum. So that's why I can't speak about any of that. And quite frankly, we don't set the tax rate and do all that. But I can't, I am specifically prohibited by law. That went into effect three years ago.
But the budget increase, like whatever the percentage is that you're, anyway, but like I said, I wasn't.
Yeah. It's, it's just that I can't. No, I understand.
But the referendum's May 10th, so everybody should remember to go vote on May 10th.
And I didn't say that.
I know, I did. I don't pay.
Thank you very much. All right. At this point, I think we're done with the public comment. And information and proposals. I apologize for those who have come out and expected to speak, and I can tell you that Mr. Wild, Ms. Run Road, do you have anything that you would like to tell us? my email provider tells me you only can send out 250 email messages a day.
Pull it closer, Heather.
I blew through that, and I started using alternative email servers. You have to pull the microphone a little closer, because you don't yet have the projecting So there have been a lot of emails back and forth, and thank you all very much. And so at this point, if anyone would like to stay, that's fine. voice, but you'll get there. But if anyone wants to leave, I would suggest if you could make a little aisle for them
So the juniors took the SAT on April 5th, and the sophomores took the cap test on
so that they could leave without falling over, that would be most appreciated.
the same day.
Thank you for coming.
The teacher conferences at the high school are this Thursday and Friday, and we have
And do thank you for coming.
days on Tuesdays. And the physical musical is premiering on April 28th and 29th at 7:30, and there's a matinee on the 30th.
All right. And then obviously, school vacation was this past week, and quarter three at the high school, I believe, was this week. Also, the Mike Casey Trio featuring the AHS Jazz Band will be performing on May 5th from 7 to 8 p.m. in the auditorium there. AP exams begin on May 1st, and registration is tomorrow. And also, various Avon negotiation applications were extended a few days this week. And I'll also just add, with the guidance counselor cut, you did cut, you did not replace Mrs. Lieberfarb a few years ago, and there are students who have now gone through their fourth guidance counselor after various ones leaving and it's been coming back and forth. And you're not really adequately supporting students with four different guidance counselors in three years. And as someone who went to guidance more than I probably should have this year, it was definitely hard to get an appointment sometimes, and I really, I mean, if you're talking about something that affects every single student in the building, couldn't get a guidance counselor well, because those kids have to go so far. So personally, I'm kind of a problem.
I completely agree. They're overworked as it is, and I think that getting rid of another one and yet adding even more to that workload will make them probably not so good at their job for the rest of the students that they have. I also think that I should say something about the theater thing, not only because my mother would be disappointed if I didn't, because my brother was mentioned by a couple of people as getting a scholarship, and he's now going to UConn. He's in an exclusive acting program because of what Miss Patterson has done for him here. And he didn't know what he wanted to do when he got to college, and he, you know, when he got to the point of deciding where to go. And he wasn't very academically inclined, and he didn't really like anything. And once he got into these classes, he found something that he really loved and wanted to go for. And now I, it's nice for me to know that he is doing something that he loves, and he knows that he loves it because of UConn here and some of his classes. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Mrs. Mashaw, you're up next.
So something far less stimulating, financial report. I'd like to report for the month of March, the most exciting adjustment to your financial report was the increase of $365,000 to the final year-end forecast. That is due to the final supplemental appropriation coming before you, and the first one's still pending at the town level. But that $365,000 is more or less the result of the open choice tuition program revenue that we received this year, hitting that 4 percent mark, as says the memo. Other than that, I'm hoping to be compiling the list of year-end encumbrances for your consideration, and we should add that to you next month as on schedule.
Excellent. I just might, as a technical matter, might suggest that it's really hard to read against the slate gray of the print. So a different color on the highlighting might be helpful for people that are in air design. But thank you.
People that aren't young.
Right. And I'm the only old one here, so that's all right. High School Capstone Project.
Okay. This is the last year of our human rights course and senior mastery project. So in place of the senior mastery project next year, we will be implementing a capstone project, as I have shared with you at previous meetings. This year, we've been developing the capstone. The bulk of this work has been done by our department coordinators with input and assistance from staff and students. So tonight, we have two of our department coordinators here. I'd like to introduce Jenna Ellsworth, our English Language Arts Department Coordinator, and Betsy Sandborn, our Social Studies Coordinator. And they're going to provide us an overview of the capstone, and kind of how we got from where we were to where we're going.
Hi. Thank you for having us. We both have one-year-olds, so if we fall asleep during this, because this is normally our bedtime. So we're excited to be here to present something that actually the coordinators have been eating, breathing, sleeping over the last few months. And we've done some focus groups with students, and it's one of the first times we've really gotten students involved in the development of something big like this, and we're seeing a lot of excitement about it. So we'll start you off with just a brief overview. Two of the highlights here is, one, that the project is really all about student choice. So the current SMP Senior Mastery Project was tied to the human rights course. The capstone is not tied to a course, not tied to any specific discipline, and students are really, as you can see here, encouraged to follow a personal passion or intellectual curiosity that they will sort of be married to throughout their process. The second part that we're highlighting here with the overview is that this is an opportunity for students to demonstrate the interdisciplinary skills that they've obtained throughout their high school experience, which is really what we define as the capstone.
And just to emphasize, I mean, the first few words here, personal passion and intellectual curiosity, we really wanted to honor the variety of students we have in this building, and be able to have them demonstrate a mastery in very different ways, kind of whatever works for them, or whatever might encourage them to maybe even pursue something that's off the path of our traditional curriculum.
So when we started this process as the department coordinators, we really spent a lot of time trying to decide really what was our vision for this project. And after long discussions, which were really rather enlightening, since they were cross-disciplinary, we really came to these key points as the sort of criteria that defined, or really came out of our vision for the capstone. So some of it, we already emphasized, this idea of student choice. The core of the project is the third one here, the inquiry focus. So really holding the high standard of this is not just a reflection of an experience or a creation of something without a sort of inquiry focus or research question to be addressed, problem to be solved. So we're doing a lot of, like I said, cross-disciplinary conversations about what inquiry really looks like in all the disciplines, so that way we can support the different project paths that students will take on.
And so just very quickly, the process that we went through, it's been, it seems like a couple of years, but in fact, it's been a couple of months.
But they were going to do it in one period.
We started with sort of this philosophy and vision. You know, in some ways, we have something in place with the SMP that we wanted to kind of maintain the best parts of that in terms of, you know, the rigor and some of the expectations we have, but then broaden it a little bit to capture that inquiry basis that Betsy mentioned. And also to honor, you know, again, the spectrum of students we have in this building. So we came up with sort of like philosophical and inclusionary statements, I guess, and then we had to get down to, you know, educators can spend a lot of time in that area. And so we did end up getting into the framework, getting into some definitions, so that we had something to work with. So the first two steps was really administration, both building and district-wide, and department coordinators. But the steps three and four were really the most enlightening and really exciting, because that's where we started bringing students in. And so we had department meetings where we presented to all of our departments, and got feedback from teachers. But the student focus groups, which we held with ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade separately, were the ones where students really gave us very good criticism and feedback, but also showed a lot of excitement from the ability to broaden out the topics that they could choose from what it is right now, which is more core-centered, and being able to maybe take some risks in their life.
People asked about why involve the 12th grade, because they've already done this SMP, they're not going to be doing this capstone. But it was, it was really beneficial to have their feedback to compare their, their having gone through the SMP process. And some of them got so involved that, per their request, are going to be helping us present this to the junior class when we do so, as a means to sort of answer questions about what they really got out of SMP, and just the excitement that they have for the upcoming seniors for next year, as to sort of the opening of the choice.
And just the final step in this process was doing some of the more nitty-gritty, you know, rubric creation and that sort of thing, which I think the students didn't really know what they were in for, because rubric creation can be an arduous task. And so, yeah, some of them wanted to pull their hair out by the end of the day, but they stuck with it. And so we extended, we sort of had a committee of groups working on either a rubric, a handbook, or this whole like proposal process, and having a group of teachers and students collaborating together was pretty meaningful.
And the students who were selected, both for the focus groups and then with the work in the creating of their rubric and some other tasks we had that day, were sort of handpicked to represent a range of student abilities and academic levels.
So let's just take you through the, like, the basics of what this will look like, and highlighting maybe some of the changes for those of you who've had students go through the SMP. You're probably pretty well aware of what that entailed. There are some similarities, but the differences are going to be pretty obvious. We are actually starting this process this year, and there will be students who can make a proposal to, for a project, starting as early as June, if they want to present in October. There was a lot of appeal to that for many of our current juniors, those who feel maybe a little pressured by having a really AP-heavy course load and/or college and all the admission process, all of that. They felt very excited about starting it early, rather than starting it in September their senior year. So that was, that's a major change that students are very excited about.
Yeah, the opportunity to start over this summer was sort of a big appeal to a lot of, especially the seniors who didn't have that option with the SMP. I had the senior focus group, and, you know, they were saying things like, I did nothing this summer before my senior year, and I could have been working on this project. So that, and we're also thinking or envisioning that many kids will tie an internship to their capstone. So if they're doing a summer internship, they can also have the opportunity to sort of use that as a new research.
And one thing that's been brought up by both students and faculty is that with the possibility being kind of limitless in terms of what students do, they could potentially use their capstone as something that they put on their college resume. We anticipate that some of the things that we see could be things we haven't even imagined. So it's pretty exciting in that respect, but also knowing that they can, they can kind of use it as a bragging point later on.
So as part of the proposal, students will select a teacher mentor, much like they do with the SMP. But because this is really open to student choice, we're going to really encourage that they select a mentor that has some sort of background knowledge or interest in what it is that they're researching, so that they can really be of assistance. So with that, we also sort of encourage the option to find a secondary expert, if you will, outside of the school. Everyone will be required to have a teacher mentor, but there will be some of those cases where maybe an outside expert might be of assistance as well.
So after their proposal is accepted and they move forward, you know, with their process, the biggest part is really research. This is a research-intensive project, but we are really mindful of research looking different for different projects. So of course, there's traditional academic research, which as an English teacher, I'm never going to throw away. But I think that we also need to be mindful of the fact that research can be an interview with an expert. It could be experience or data collected through an internship. So we're thinking of looking at creatively in terms of ways students can acquire research.
In regards to the structure for the research, this was another big sort of point of discussion where some people felt like we really shouldn't require too much structure. As we currently have the SMP updates that really are sort of set, we're looking more for differentiation depending on the type of research, the project, and just the overall vision for the project.
And whatever the mentor and the student sort of decide is best for that particular student, because many of our students can do very well independently, but some do need more structure. And so I think it's important to be kind of cognizant of that and know that, you know, we can offer structure.
where maybe an outside expert might be of assistance as well.
So, after their proposal is accepted and they move forward, you know, with their process, the biggest part is really research. This is a research-intensive project, but we are really mindful of research looking different for different projects. So, of course, there's traditional academic research, which, as an English teacher, I'm never going to throw away, but I think that we also need to be mindful of the fact that research can be an interview with an expert. It could be experience or data collected through an internship. So, we're thinking of looking at creatively in terms of ways students can acquire research.
And in regards to the structure for the research, this was another big sort of point of discussion where some people felt like we really shouldn't require too much structure, as we currently have the SMP updates that really are sort of set. We're looking more for differentiation depending on the type of research, the project, and just the overall vision for the project.
And whatever the mentor and the student sort of decide is best for that particular student, because many of our students can do very well independently, but some do need more structure. And so, I think it's important to be kind of cognizant of that and know that, you know, we can offer structure as needed.
I think the other major difference from SMP is number three up here, that there's going to be three scheduled presentation dates throughout the year. There will be a fourth date that we have at the end of the year as a sort of fail-safe date that we're not going to allow students to necessarily sign up for, but the idea of having different presentation dates, again, that kind of go with the project, it allows for students to work at the pace that's appropriate for them as well as what's appropriate for their project. So, when they present, this is really their showcase of mastery, and students will present to a grading panel, a grading panel that will consist of teachers who will collaborate on the actual results for that presentation. Another major difference from SMP is we're looking to make this more authentic in that students will seek out an expert, and I do my air quotes with the word "expert" because that was another sort of point of concern, is where are we going to find these people? But the idea is, if you're presenting something on technology, you would not invite myself because I have a circa 2001 cellphone. So, the idea is we do want knowledgeable people in the audience to be able to ask probing questions so that students really can demonstrate their mastery.
And, yeah, I think that, and that's the one that, you know, keeping it authentic and also maybe a little more interactive, so that it's not necessarily me standing up and doing a book report, it's me giving a presentation, not necessarily just to my parents, to my parents, but also to people who can engage in whatever the course of study, whatever the discipline is, in a very real way.
So, another point of discussion was how this was going to go about being graded. Because there's such different, or the potential for such differentiation in the type of research as well as the final product, the idea of pass/fail became sort of what we thought was more appropriate for this project. This project is really all about students demonstrating mastery, so they're either doing that, and we have, we will have rubrics that are sort of, you know, being finalized at this point. And the other idea behind the pass/fail was that, well, this actually coming from a student in one of the focus groups, that it might allow students to take bigger risks, you know, knowing that, you know, if they meet the standard, that it passes, and they're not necessarily tying it to what they're doing.
And we think it's a good way to have kids, students get very specific directed feedback on standards where they still need to show improvement.
But also, if I could just add onto that piece, because we had a lot of discussion around that if the student goes through the whole process and the product doesn't come out quite right at the end, that's fine, because they have their reflection piece and what they would do differently, so it's not based on the perfect product at the end either, it's much more based on the process of getting to that end product.
And really film learning, yeah.
And one of the biggest things for the primary stakeholders here, the students, and of course, the staff who'll be mentoring, is how we're going to provide ongoing support, because this is a bit of a shift in terms of what's, what we currently have. And we are presenting this to the junior class April 24th, however, I'm pretty sure, based on listening to my classes, that most of them already know at least some of it because of the juniors who were, and other students who were involved in the process. So, they've heard, I'm not sure if they've heard the totally accurate version, or if it's some form of telephone, but, so we will be having a junior class meeting, and we plan to have office hours for the capstone coordinators, yours truly, and also a committee who will be responsible for sort of overseeing this, looking at proposals, giving support to students and mentors as needed. We do anticipate there will be, you know, questions and areas where students need support, so we wanted to make sure that we had some open time for them.
And questions also from the faculty. So, we ran a PD on April 7th where we broke up into different groups and looked at the rubric and talked about this idea of inquiry and what it looks like across the disciplines, as well as what this sort of mentor-mentee relationship will look like and the types of sort of contracts they can create for this project. And we found that there were some areas that people felt pretty confident about, but then some areas in particular, the "what is inquiry?" where we really need to sort of come to more common ground in regards to what that really looks like. Specifically, if a student comes to a mentor and says something like, "I want to start a business," what's the inquiry focus, right? So, just, you know, figuring out ways to actually help mentors guide their students to connecting this to an appropriate inquiry-based focus.
And a lot of this, because this isn't tied to a course, we are going to be offering a lot of things online as well, and so we are building an interface that will allow students to, and mentors, to access relevant information and be able to submit things electronically so that we all, the Google Drive is sort of like the lightbulb right now in the school, but it is, it's something that we're going to be using to make sure that communication's out there and that students are having it even housed in sort of a logical way. And we'll also plan on doing PD in August before we even grade any of these to make sure that everybody's grading similarly, that there's calibration, and that we don't have outliers, that people are at consensus in terms of what is meeting standard and what's not.
And that will sort of act as a follow-up to our "what is inquiry?" workshop. In regards to grading and grading, and I meant to say this when we were on that slide, the numerous presentation dates, so one of the things that's nice about the way we have this structured is if a student does decide to present in October and they don't meet standard, they will just present, you know, an upcoming date, so there are multiple times, and that might actually be an additional motivation to sort of go earlier on. We are really pushing for mentors to make sure that students are prepared to present, that it's not like, "I'm just going to jump into this, present, and just hope that I meet standard, and not have to worry about it." Again, we really want them to demonstrate mastery, so there is actually a presentation readiness form that mentors will fill out, but like I said, if for some reason students don't meet standard, they'll get specific feedback as to what their project was missing, and, you know, without any penalty, just present at the next presentation date. And then the last couple of slides are just, they included some specific names of contributors, so as Jenna said, when we started this, it was department coordinators and administration, and then we got some different faculty from various disciplines involved, as well as some specific students up there who really kind of saw through this process as well.
All right, well, thank you very much. Do members of the board have questions? Mr. Speedback?
First, I just want to thank you both for the presentation and all the contributors who are putting in, I know, a lot of time and effort into designing this, but I just want to make sure, I know the junior class, you said, I think, is April 24th, will be aware of what's happening, but if this presentation or something else can be put online, so other students or others in the community will understand what this entails going forward.
Parents. Parents, right. We also, just to address that too, because we're, yeah, it's a shift for parents too, and so we plan on certainly sending some communications home and also having, we haven't said the time yet, but doing a little Q and A for parents to come in and sort of walk through for anybody who has questions, because I think that's important too, so it's a shift.
Mr. Shu?
As a parent, not having gone through this yet, I'm just curious what it actually looks like. So, when a student comes in to present, are they at a podium, and then there's a panel of judges, and then there's an audience, like what, I don't even understand how to conceptualize it.
We've talked about some different options for organizational structures for presentations, and it's still something that the committee will finalize. One of the things we were talking about as coordinators when we were designing this is having sort of like-topic presentations, we sort of work together, and they'll be in allotted time, I think we said something like 15 minutes is the expectation, which is actually a little bit lower than the current SMP. So, one, the idea is they could sort of share this expert that I think a lot of people are having anxiety about going and seeking out, but two, it will sort of be a proper time management, and they can share the grading panel. So, it would be, to answer your question, you know, three teachers grading in a classroom, an expert of some sort that the student invited, their mentee, parents, and any other, you know, we're encouraging underclassmen to really get to as many presentations as they can because we're doing this, and...
Well, just to add to that, actually, two of the presentation days, we hope to do on half-days, one will be the PSAT day, one will be the SAT day, and in the afternoon, have the seniors present, so that then we do have freshmen, sophomore, junior in the building who would then be required to go, so that they are really aware of what this looks like, from a very young age, and it's not just, you know, some kids go and some don't, which I think will be really helpful down the road, you know, getting people used to what the expectation is. And I also, just to, just a little more on your question, I think it can look very different depending on what the project is. If I built something, I probably wouldn't, if I built an engine, I probably wouldn't haul it up to a classroom, it would probably be something outside or something that's accessible to the building. If I wrote a symphony, I'd probably do it in the auditorium. So, it will be, it's not a one-size-fits-all presentation. Some might look like this, you know, and it might, and, you know, in fact, my parents are in the audience, they're residents, and I told them I was presenting.
Oh, please stand up.
Soccer game like high school.
Where are they?
My students are like, "Oh, my God, which ones are your parents?"
You have to introduce them now.
Oh, my God.
I see a proud first.
Really?
Look at me.
Welcome.
So, anyway, I think it's, we are reluctant to say it's got to be a standard delivered. Some will, I think some students will be very comfortable doing that, and just like some students will tend to go towards a traditional thesis paper, because that's what's comfortable and what's normal, but I, again, it could look different for different kids.
And by what point in the year are you done with the SMP, so their last final date? Like, is there a release, or they're not waiting till June? Like, what is your thought process for when you space it out?
So, the last scheduled presentation date, I think we have in April.
It's the SAT, that's so clear.
Yeah.
First week of April.
April. And then we do have, like I said, a sort of May date that we're not really telling kids about, so...
Tell us now, you're in trouble.
As a sort of, you know, in case. Well, you know, kids will know about it, but it won't be available for signup, it'll just be their focus.
And we anticipate that the students who start in June, you know, if they kind of go with their plan and get everything accomplished that they intend to, they'll be done in October, right? And so, and some kids might not even start the process till September, and so those kids will probably go till, you know, January or April, depending on how their process goes.
Well, thank you, honestly, I had questions, and you answered them with each slide, so I was like, "Okay, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good." Thank you very much.
Further questions? Mrs. Zeroli?
So, I just want to say thank you, because I have, I really think what you did was took some of the best of the SMP and yet didn't keep some of what wasn't, which I think for a student going through this project, it sounds phenomenal. It won't be a lecture at, it'll be a student really growing and diving deep into something, which to me is a wonderful thing. I also want to give credit because you've gone ahead of the timing of a mandate, you've gone above and beyond, and I think this is phenomenal for Avon, and you guys really deserve a lot of credit for doing this hard work, and I'm glad that the students were able to contribute, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Yes.
Well, I have a few questions. I'm a junior, so I'll be doing this while I'm here. I wonder, you say that when you're presenting that you are going to have a panel of judges that are going to be more educated on your topic so that they can ask you more in-depth things to assess how much you know about it? I wonder if the students are responsible for creating that, or if your advisory is or something like that?
Well, we anticipate that, and we know that that's a source of concern, so we anticipate that we will have through, you know, various means, whether it's the old SPAR program, whether it's the internship program, whether it's people we just know in town or can reach out to, that we, as the capstone, in the capstone committee, should provide, you know, a list of names, if you're interested in, you know, something with animals, maybe we could, we could, you know, that sort of thing. So, you're not expected to make cold calls, it will be, you know, we will have support in terms of finding...
And I want to clarify, it's not a panel of judges, so you have a grading panel, which will consist of teachers, just like your current SMP presentations are, so maybe two or three teachers, and then one sort of expert, at least one sort of what we're calling this expert audience member. So, it's not like you're going to have to seek out five people, right? It's just one, whereas the rest of the people will be teachers, and an expert might be a teacher. There are a lot of teachers, and we're putting out a sort of spreadsheet, you're going to get to know a little bit more about your teacher's interests and areas of expertise, and we're putting out a spreadsheet to sort of make that available, one for mentoring purposes, but another for the idea that a teacher might be a teacher.
And if you're, if you do it in the summer and are done in October, then do you get credit, you're half-credit during the summer, does that just transfer, or do you have a study from then on?
It's not a class.
I don't look...
Director of...
So, the credit, yeah, he has the credit, that would be awarded, and the completion of your, you know, defense, essentially, so once you go through your final presentation, then you get the passing mark and you're half-credit.
Yeah, I would just like to publicly thank Jenna and Betsy and their colleagues for all of their work, because as they said in the beginning, they truly have been living and breathing and giving it their all, so again, I thank you both, and please extend my thanks to your colleagues.
Well done.
All right. It has been suggested that the board might want to take a five-minute break, is that the board's pleasure? Maybe not, okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I understand we want to pull the book on page 57, which is "The God of Small Things." Anything else?
Adding this.
They already did add it. So, we've added the...
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Rell moves, Mr. Burke seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Aye unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is "The Bullying Prevention," second read. The item is anticipated to remain on the agenda due to outstanding questions, unless you want to formally commit it down and restart the reading process, which I assume we didn't want to do. Okay? All right, hearing no comment, we're all set. The next item is "Basis for Grading," second read, report from the high school leadership. I think Mr. Arpin is doing it, or is Ms. Moll?
I'm just thinking.
Ah, all right. Come on forward, gentlemen, sit down with a microphone.
Just give me one second. Good evening. This has been an interesting experience, looking back at some of the history of the school helped me get to know people a little bit better in my brief time here. So, we've been looking into some questions regarding some changes that were made in the GPA assignments at the high school, and...
We're having a little technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties, all right.
It was queued up, but there's something, give us a second.
This is something we haven't seen yet?
I think we got it.
Okay, so, there was a new policy that was put into effect under the previous administration that begins with a class of 2019 of current 10th graders. This was partly a reaction to concerns, the ASH report regarding increasing levels of rigor, so there was two things that were done, there was the removal of the academic levels, there was collapsing of that, and changing the GPA at that level, at the college prep level to reflect that mix of the two levels. There were some weighting inequities that were addressed, and of course, as you know, the weighting of a course reflects the rigor of the particular course, so for example, AP courses certainly are, have a higher weighting than college prep courses and like that, so, okay. So, in terms of college admissions, I'm going to ask Mr. Etlinger to kind of talk to this a little bit, this is his thing.
Right, so from a college admissions standpoint, the GPA is just one factor of the review process when students apply out. The most important thing is... The most important thing is, in the review of the transcript itself, does the student show growth? Are they challenging themselves to the best of their ability? And then, colleges will also consider how many challenging courses they're taking, AP honors versus how many we offer here, as a school. So while GPA has an impact, they are also looking at the rigor. And when it comes to GPA, I'll mention a little bit later on, some, next slide. In fact, some feedback that I can receive from some colleges, some do end up reweighting their GPA. So even though we present a weighted GPA here, many will either take it as it is, or reweight it. As a sample, it took the top six in terms of enrollment, public and private. I don't know if I got cut off on this slide, but Tufts and BU also should be present. So the top six, public and private, in terms of articulation over the past few years for us. So the University of Connecticut, for example, they just take our GPA as it is weighted from Avon. But they also are expecting rigorous coursework, as is typically the case for most other institutions. URI, again, will take the weighted GPA. University of Maryland recalculates, so you can see their scale is a little bit different than the scale that we have here at the high school. Same thing with Northeastern. They have their own separate system. Tufts will look at the GPA as it's presented, again, examining the rigor of coursework completed, as well as BU. They look at GPA on a school-by-school basis, for kind of, approximately, overall, A-minus average. But, again, rigor being of utmost importance.
And this information, excuse me, but, that you didn't see on that slide, I gave you a narrative page in your packet, so that, that basically summarized there as well.
Page 119. Next slide, please. Next slide?
Yes, next slide.
So, right now, the quality points, as I mentioned before, reflect the rigor of the courses. What we found out, and Peter will speak to this in a second, is that our point differential here at Avon High School is really more significant than a lot of other districts in our district reference group. Our weighting makes it difficult for students to achieve a higher overall GPA if they take more college prep courses than honors or AP. So it's, it's, it does reflect truly the rigor of the courses, if you want to speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I believe there's also a, a little Excel spreadsheet in your packet as well. And in preparation for tonight, I looked at every single school in our district A and B, and you can see that we have, in fact, the highest starting point with the new system for the GPA, with an A at the CP level being 4.33. Typically, you'll see an A starts at a 4.0. With our three levels, there are certain schools, like Glastonbury, Weston, where they have two groupings. So it's a CP, and honors and AP get grouped together, so they're awarded the same weight. You'll notice in Trumbull, they even have a smaller increment of increase, where honors gets a .05 and a .07. There are some schools that do numerical weighting, numerical presentation. There are some schools that don't present a weighted GPA at all. So this is just serving as a reference point, and kind of how we fall amongst the, the other schools.
So when this was, this change was proposed, the result was that in the AP and the honors classes, there was no change in the GPA, except in the minus levels of each grade, the quality point was decreased by .01. So in other words, an A-minus was, under the old system, a 4.34. Under the new system, it is a 4.33, so virtually no change. The college prep was increased a third of a point. So, and A-plus, under the old, was 4.33, now it's 4.67. That may or may not be a true reflection of, of the difference in rigor, okay? So, so, as I said, what we found out is that, is that there were some changes made. Nothing that, there are no students now that are applying to college, for example, that are affected by the new system, since they're only sophomores. They won't be applying to colleges for a little while yet, so they're, they're still getting to that point. So at this point, I'm gonna say that, that this has been a learning experience for me, just, you know, getting, as I said, to know a little bit more about the school, and about its, its workings. And Peter has, has been very helpful, and he's very knowledgeable about this, but I think we've all, you know, kind of gotten some, some clearer pictures. What we'd like to do, then, is to say that we really were not at a point where we need to make a change, that we perhaps would like to look at reverting to the original system that is in effect through the class of 2018. So
And may I just interject? I appreciate the work that the high school has put into this. I agree and support the recommendation, as Art just presented, for a number of reasons. I went back and looked at the voluminous amount of information the last time that this GPA matter was researched. And I can tell you, there were four binders this big. And I saw the extensive research that went behind, not, not went behind, but was used to make an informed decision. Now, I'm not being critical of anybody or any process, but I think something of this magnitude requires the same type of examination. And I'm left with a number of questions about, you know, clearly, the intent was to help students, and does this new system actually help students? I will quickly say that I can, I supported, and I continue to support, the collapse of the level. We need to continue to provide the supports for students to be successful. So, that CP level is a very important level for many of our students, because we have a percentage that are not going to be enrolled in honors or AP, because we service our students. But with that said, I would ask the board to ask me to convene a group to actually research all the systems, and come back to you. And I'll keep you updated, we can put it as a standing update on where we are. But I think this warrants far more research and review of information, so we make sure we make the best decision. You can see that, Peter, I appreciate your, you know, canvassing all of our competitors, let's put it that way. Many of whom, I might say that we outrank. I'll just quickly say that. And there's no magic formula, just like there's no perfect schedule. If there were, or if we created it, that is a true revenue source, I can tell you for sure. But I do support, you know, taking a step back. It's not harming students, the previous system, and I don't believe that the, you know, the revised system was put in place to hurt students. I just have way too many questions to be able to sit here comfortably and say, you know, I recommend where we are. I just don't.
All right. Mrs. Schut, you've got some questions?
So just so I understand, Gary, are you saying you're supporting staying with what you're proposing?
Actually, I'm sorry, I cut you off. I'm proposing going back to what was always known. And it worked. And I just, I, I have what's going to sound like an unrelated question. But, I think some of, you know, some of the concerns that are expressed with me, are the, the names of the schools, colleges, universities our students get into. I'm not sure that's an outgrowth of our GPA system, I'm not convinced of that. I'm convinced that we have to market our students differently. We have to be proactive and make contact, and establish relationships with colleges or universities that we do not have relationships with, and say, look at how good our school is, and look at how our students perform. And I think that will address some of that concern. It has nothing to do with GPA, because as Peter, you articulated, many of them, and you did too, many of them recalculate, they accept it the way it is, they have their own set of criteria. I just have a, you know, a concern that, it's not a concern, it's an interest in approaching colleges or universities proactively, instead of just using, I guess, using the same pool that we know our students will be successful at.
Let me just make sure I understand this, because I'm, I'm in fact actually confused, and I almost never admit that. If I hear correctly, the high school administration is saying, the current grading system should remain in place, which I mean, the current grading system is modified, the current one. Is that correct?
What we're looking at is looking at the, at the program that is in place for the students up to the class of 2018.
All right.
The old system, if you will.
All right. So
Get rid of the 1920s.
All right, that's correct.
So if I may speak, so that we can visualize this for me, because that's the way I kind of need to operate. If we look at page 113, what you would be doing would be removing, first of all, it wouldn't be ending with class up, so you'd strike that.
Correct.
And then, you would delete the academic, because we no longer have that level. So that paragraph would disappear from 113. Then you'd go to page 114, and you would delete the column of academic.
Correct.
Then you would go to page 115, and the policy would end at class, the definition, going through class rank.
Correct.
And the rest of it would be gone, 116 and 117. Some parallel, we need to put in the legal references that are appropriate, but, those would be the changes that the policy subcommittee had been asking about.
And then, and then I'm also asking you to direct me to review this and report back to you.
Happy to.
Okay?
So, at least, now I understand, because my understanding was entirely to the context, so it was very All right.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So what's the timing of this? How does the timing of this affect? Why do we have to make a decision tonight? Like, what's, what's the timing that will affect the, the students at the
Well, it will not affect current students that are under the older
Doesn't have enough
The newer students, they're just, they don't have enough time in yet, so their GPAs will be changed to reflect what the one grid will be, and go from there.
Yeah, the only impact moving forward, the, the current sophomore and freshman class who are not involved in the post-secondary planning
So I guess my question is, if you have so many questions about it, why are we voting on it tonight, if we have time? Why couldn't we say?
No, the questions, Jackie, are about the future. They're not about the past. It's about the fact that, beginning, the next, with class of 2019, what's gonna start showing will be calculated differently. And what we said the past few meetings was, we didn't under, we didn't have enough information for why we change. We changed many other things of this policy to be responsive. They were explained well, for the collapse of the levels was the most significant. And adding in credit for all electives was the other significant. We weren't, we have never been clear on the GPA change, and that is what we're all agreeing on now. We don't have enough data, so therefore, to do the beginning with class of 2019 would not be appropriate.
But at any point in time, after this committee does their work, it could come back in, or it could come back in with some reformatted version, depending upon what the results of the committee are.
It would have to, any, any work of the group that we're going to put together, will have to take into account how it's phased in. You can't just do it all at one time. So what you're saying is correct. We'd probably come in with a phased-in plan, if we determine that it needs to change.
So you might still determine that it should continue as is?
Should be, right. And I, and And as I'm sitting here, I have no preconceived notion of where that will go. There's so much information, but it's not linked together. Many people have looked at this, but it's not, it hasn't been articulated clearly as one, one package. I don't know how to, how else to describe it. And our job now, through your direction, is that we go do that.
Well, Mrs. Young.
So I'm also on the policy committee, and I've, I've heard, there's been a lot of discussion about this for a number of months. Your presentation is terrific. This is the kind of information that we're looking for, when we want to try and consider and weigh all the factors that go into the policies that support the students, and the administrators, and the teachers, and everybody who try their very best every day. I would be willing to support a change in the policy, in order to encourage more students to take higher-level, more challenging courses. And I think that was one of the things that was intended originally, when this collapse of levels and all of this was originally put together. I'm under the impression that we are about to start a two-year follow-up process of And I would assume that there would be quite a bit of looking at trends, and what's going on in general with everything, including this. So as part of that, could the new building administration that, that comes in, take a policy change that we might make today, under advisement, and, and look at it and see if it's working? You know, if we change this policy to reflect the discussions that have taken place over the last few months, can we see if it works? If more kids will actually be encouraged to take higher-level and more challenging courses? I would be in favor of supporting this.
May I, may I just follow up with Mrs. Young? Because I think there's two, I appreciate your comments, that there are two other factors that greatly impact students seeking a higher-level coursework. That's a teacher and their counselor. To encourage them to stretch and support them, and I'm not saying they don't do this, I'm just saying, that's, those are two significant things, that when students, when teachers, their students go to teachers for recommendations for the next course, maybe we should appropriately push our students, instead of, you know, perhaps saying, okay, this is the easiest way. I'm not suggesting that that's happening, but there are two other critical factors. And I know, I mean, I know the counselors talk about this all the time.
Yeah, and I, and I do know that we were throwing around the ideas, coordinators, of having, moving forward, some form of like a last day of the semester, kind of be focused on those conversations in the classroom, and it just didn't get traction this, this year. I know there were more conversations that were happening, but I do know that moving forward, we are trying to get those conversations to happen more readily and thoughtfully.
One of the questions that, it's not a question, it's a comment. I am concerned that between the ladders, it's not an equal distance, so it's a discontinuity surface. So there's a big drop when you go from, you know, a, a college prep to, to honors. And I'm just letting you know that bothers me. So, Mr. Wild.
I have a question. I don't know if you know the answer, but do you know, well, that 1% of students take an AP class before graduating from high school?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Because I'm, I'm asking because, kind of what I was thinking about is, I know in Swoosberry, they have a motivation for every student to take an AP-level course before they graduate, with the idea that every student has a college-level experience. And they have 72% of kids taking an AP course. I guarantee you, we're not anywhere near that. And I know, earlier in the year, I made a recommendation to, it might have been last year, but to have ECE at the same level as AP, again, without incentivizing. So, this is a little bit unrelated from GPA, but I do think it's very important to have teachers and counselors talking directly about how to incentivize AP, because I, and it's been discussed before, and it's not incentivized. And I really, and I personally, like, students, and we're also offering more APs, and students really should be encouraged to be taking advantage of them. And so, my thought is, do you think that the GPA weighting really would make a difference in incentivizing students, or it really does come down to, it's the counselors and the teacher discussions?
Well, I would hate for anybody to be incentivized by a number. You know, I want them to be able to, on their own, pursue passions and subjects that are of interest. If you're doing it for that reason alone, you're doing it for the wrong reasons. But I do know that we have shifted to include the ECE coursework into that AP weighting. And I know that we're expanding that ECE weighting. And I, I do know that the AP participation And I do know that the AP participation may not be comparable to some other schools, but you have to keep in mind, we're also 500 students less, so our offerings aren't quite as robust as those other schools. And I know that we're also trying to look at other ways of getting those pre-college experiences in there through partnerships, through Texas community colleges and getting teachers articulated through that program as well. So we are looking at expanding those pre-college opportunities. And I think that's the, the goal as we move forward, is to have every student, and that was the goal in the previous district as well, which is one that I'm working to make a goal here, is to have every student, whether it's, you know, that internship or pre-work experience or a pre-college experience so that it's relevant towards their future plans.
We, we, and I'm sorry, we very much appreciate your efforts, Peter, and those that are working with you. The other thing is, we have added more AP courses, those that tend to have higher enrollments in other places. They're the more popular ones. And again, the articulated agreements are some of the greatest things you could ever have as a public high school because your high school student is going to a community college for free, getting college credit that can be transferred and high school credit at the same time and that early college experience. So it's a win-win all the way around.
And the UConn program, I agree with you, does need more promotion in Avon because that is a great program. It's one of the oldest early college experience programs in the country. And for $200, you can get a transfer through the University of Connecticut and we are expanding those offerings.
Do you have any thoughts on how, how that could be promoted more? I hate to put you on the spot, but you. What, do you have any, you know, things that come right to mind?
I think parental, you know, information on these pre-college experiences that we offer I think probably would be the best starting place because, you know, you have the loudest voice in terms of support of your students. So I think that would be a good place to start.
We might want to be invited so that we can express our support strongly.
But also maybe information on the website in the front of the program of studies along with virtual high school, which is another way to get kids to have AP courses and things that they're very interested in. And have that encouraged when kids ask about it or encourage kids to ask about it?
In the program of studies, this year, I believe, we added in, in my previous district, we had a chart of kind of an easy quick reference chart of the AP offerings and ECE offerings. So I made sure that we included that this year in there, so it is.
Hopefully it would kind of in the front of the book and not in the back?
The VHS is nestled in the back.
Yep.
One of our best kept secrets.
And it's really, really annoying. We want to go there.
I can reassure you that it does fill, so.
All right. Mr. Spivak?
Sure, I feel like a lot of my comments are already said expressly, you know, Laura and Gary. And to Connor's point, I have tried to look at some of the data of other schools and their AP enrollment versus ours. And ours looks as a percentage lower, especially in the core classes, as Gary expressed. So I look at, and I'm going to take this from our capstone presentation because there are so many contributors across our, our school that participated, and one of the things they said was raise expectations for all students with all capitalized. And I feel like we need to do that by having more students participate in AP classes and the ECE. I mean, we have our staff and teachers trained, taken their time to be able to teach those. And I don't feel like we have communicated as well to the students to them, put them in a position. You know, maybe they're not all able to take every AP or ECE, but I think each student has some special strength where they will be able to take at least one while they're in high school. And I don't feel like that that's happened. So I also would like to see the data of where we stand today and, you know, a year from now and how we've taken an effort to increase those percentages.
Can I just say one more? In some of, some of our neighboring districts, I have looked at some of these, some of these numbers. And some of our neighboring districts, they'll offer either the CP or the AP level of certain courses. So that's why you will see a higher participation rate and enrollment rate. So I mean, that might be something that we may want to consider possibly looking at.
And then they, do they, they also have the requirement that if you take the AP course, you take the exam?
Or AP weight is linked to completion of the exam.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion.
Connor has it.
I have one more thing.
Sure.
This is not about GPA, but it's a policy comment. Teachers on the, at the AP level have the, I understand, have the decision of what grade you need, whether or not you take the exam as a senior, whether or not you take the final. It's varying some, it's a little inconsistent on whether or not you have an 85 or a 90. Personally, it would be really nice if it was just either like a substitute. Teachers, it'll be a 90 if you don't take the AP exam, it'll be an 85 if you do. And then you don't have to take the final at the end of the year. It'd be really nice if that was a policy, so it's completely consistent with all of your teachers. Just a thought.
Sounds reasonable.
I learned something new with that.
Can I, can I just say before we, we're going to vote now, but we are also possibly going to vote again when he makes the presentation? Right? If he's, if he offers up a change once the research is done.
Yes.
We would be voting again.
Correct.
Is there any chance that we should just wait until vote after we hear that? If it's not a timely thing, or is, is this timely and we need it today?
Actually, I'm not sure that that was entirely answered into my suggestion. Mrs. Arolly answered. I'm not sure the administration said that. But parliamentary-wise, the way you test that is you make a motion to table.
I just want to make sure I have the scenario correct so that I'm understanding what.
My understanding is that they will come back after a period of time. I'm not sure if it was a year or six months.
I have to assemble a committee, obviously.
And say, this is how it's going and this is what we think and this is more research that we've done. Have I gotten that wrong, Mr. Mala?
No, I mean, no, you're, the group will come back with a finished product from start to finish. With all the research done and all the comparisons and all the questions that people have been asking that have been answered now in isolation, that's why it's stratified for me. So I don't know how long that's going to take.
Okay, so that's, that's important for me to know. I feel like we are probably more time sensitive than I felt like before I heard that. Like a year from now would be too long. So I, I'm happy to support whatever the administration is supporting, but I do want to give a shout out to the CP kids, you know. We were on the, I mean, I could cry saying this, we were on this committee that worked for six months to make sure that there was equity in the levels. So it's a real loss, I think, for those kids who are working to their capacity. And I know it's exciting to be an awesome AP kid and an awesome, you're just awesome and all these great things and you're achieving things and we really want to have student achievement and we want to be challenging our kids. But there are some kids who are challenged and doing amazing things at the CP level. So when we do this.
I agree with her.
We are saying, your CP is .66 less worth than the honors. And I think that's a really serious statement that everybody around this table is about to make. And I look forward to your presentation with that in mind because I think we are talking about children here who, they all achieve at different levels. You know, I, I personally am really offended by the grade chasing. And I think our community and our, you know, we have to kind of get a hold of ourselves at some point and start celebrating kids who, you know, if you can get a 4.33 as a CP kid and, you know, maybe you should have been challenged more, but how exciting, how exciting is that? That that child was able to achieve to that level. And maybe, maybe academic types would say, then he should have been challenged more. But maybe a parent would say, we are celebrating this win in my household. So I just, I just want to say that before we vote, that I will, I will support the administration tonight. But I look forward to having that, that piece really seriously considered because it's a huge loss for everybody who's not.
I feel compelled to respond because I feel the same way you do. We have to make sure that the system that we have in place is equitable for all students. And now you, at the risk of you all throwing things at me, my ideal world isn't even in play in public education. And I'll just offer some rhetorical questions. Who said that you have to have an A, B, or C-type grading schedule? The world works on a competency-based system. Who said that an A equals whatever numeric number you put next to it? Who made that up? It's kind of like the same reason we have 180 school days and we have a summer off because it's based on an agrarian society. It's time to do things different in our contemporary public high schools. And I agree with you. Every student should have the opportunity to be, to demonstrate their success in the manner in which it manifests. And it's not all about, you know, getting the fours or fives on an AP test.
But taking this vote tonight, we are saying you are, you are only half the person that the honors A is. I mean, you are .66, you know, we are actually making that statement. That's what we're doing. And I'm, I'm happy to support it as long as we really have a lens, you know, like the juniors this year, when we take this vote, this will affect their grades. You know, my child included. So is that.
No, that doesn't affect juniors.
So the sophomores will be?
Nine and 10.
Right.
Nine and 10.
And we're going to move expeditiously. We're not, you know, this is a big issue, but it has to be done methodically.
Oh, all right, I previously made the comment which sort of ties in with your comment is that I don't like the fact that it's a discontinuity surface, but that's a fancy way for saying sometimes it's a .3 jump between ladders and sometimes it's a .6. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to modify the policy as proposed by Kathy. We're ends at, on page 115. So we're deleting the beginning with the class of 2019 section.
All right, we have a second.
I second.
All right, Mrs. Rome moves. Mrs. Howard seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor? I. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, new business. And I'll try and move things along a little bit faster and I apologize for not being expeditious. From the consent agenda, the book, God of Small Things, which is page 77, because we normally put it under first new business after it's voted from the consent calendar. Mrs. Arolly?
So I think what we, I talked about, I talked about with the administration briefly, is they're going to look at that and come back with a further discussion.
All right, so that's in effect being tabled because the proposal is to take no action. All right. Got it. Item A, supplemental appropriation. Is that Mr. Mala or Mrs. Mashaw? I see you're both looking at each other going, we'll flip the coin. It's like the Super Bowl.
Thanks. So I think I quickly addressed this in the financial report. This is the second official request for the amount of funds that are coming in or have come in at this point, shoring up that open choice program tuition. I'm just asking that the board review this and approve at this point.
Did I hear you, Craig, say second submission?
Second.
Okay.
So this is a $207,000 on page 126?
Right. So the first one is still pending.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation?
I still move.
Gosh, all right. There's only one person sits to my right. I heard Mrs. Arolly move.
I will second.
All right, Mr. Spivak second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. All right. We've got several items of first read. Mrs. Arolly, would you like to talk about them?
Were there, let's see, were there any questions? I haven't received any questions on these. These are looking at, start at the very beginning. It's a very nice place to start and we keep going. So some of these are mostly Avonizing. A couple of times when it says, oh, I know, on 1100, page 131, we didn't like citizen. We don't want to be challenging citizenship, so we changed to person. But for the most part, there were not significant changes that we were making in the community relations portion that we started to review. But I'm happy to entertain any questions, any edits. Well, you, you can always send them to us and nothing exciting there, nothing slipping by as exciting.
Okay, there are no discussion. We go to sort of chairs, ruminations. Question that I would like to sort of try before the board is what should be covered in our reflection session other than evaluating the board ed? In theory, it's scheduled for tomorrow night. One of the questions I would also raise, well, two questions. One is the, the hearing that I have that actually affects me the most is that board members are saying it's not as much fun as it used to be. And I, I need to fix that. I have no freaking idea how to fix that, but I need to fix that. The reflection session is scheduled for tomorrow night if my memory is correct. In light of the fact, Mrs. Howard has resigned effective in the future and we're going to have a, shall we say, a new player, a new member.
Have we identified who the new player is?
I, I don't know who it is. So the, the question's going to be, should we postpone the reflection session? Because every time you add a new person to the mix, I mean, it may sound odd, but it actually does change the dynamics. Even a single person changes the dynamics. So I want to have a sense of feel for, to see whether or not anyone else was worried about it not being as much fun as it used to be and whether or not we should wait for our new member to join us.
I would like to, I would like to not meet tomorrow. I'd like to wait.
I, I can see there's some advantage to that. And I just didn't want to make this decision in vacuum because.
I agree. My argument would be there is so, we are inundated with meetings. I feel personally like we're meeting a lot.
I understand. And, and that's one of the things that, that I can also see us doing at the reflection session is maybe saying, is there a way we can cut down a little bit on the meetings? Because originally when I started this, it was a three-hour meeting a month. And now we spend a lot more time in meetings.
I mean, what if, what if this new member really has a strong drive to paint everything purple polka dotted? And that's, you know, why don't we wait for the reflection session to have their input and they can share what their goals and, and hopes and dreams are? Otherwise, isn't the possibility that we would have to have another one when they come on board?
It's a distinct possibility we might have to have another one.
I would agree to hold off until we have the new member. And one of the topics I'd like us to discuss is our common goals. As a board of nine, what is our vision together that we would like to accomplish for our students?
That's, that's a good idea and let's put down.
That'll be transcribed out in a minute.
Okay, I'm, I'm keeping something on my computer, sort of a running list. And fewer meetings.
I'm not advocating for fewer meetings. I'm just saying if we can avoid having another four-hour reflection session the next week, maybe we should, but.
I understand and I, I'm a big fan of you. If we can cover the same amount of work with fewer meetings, I'm sort of in favor of that. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Arolly?
So if, if I hear three of you have said you want to postpone, I need to at least discuss a couple of things, so let me know.
Go ahead.
So we're postponing?
Well, no, raise them, raise them now. Because I was intended to get the, the feel of the group and it wasn't intended to be a real live vote, but tell me what you think. That was the rumination part.
I'll always, I'll honor the vote. We have several issues at hand that need to be discussed and agreed upon because I'm not a miracle worker and minutes don't just magically happen and they need to happen within a certain timeframe. And a request was made outside of that, outside of my understanding and knowledge to have board briefs. And board briefs, we need to at least understand what they're supposed to look like. They've looked differently in the past. I'd like to have some kind of agreement by the board. That's always nice when we can agree. And the board briefs can't come before the minutes. I am emphatic on that because the minutes must be done in a timely manner. They were not done in a timely manner until we had Nicole. Further, so 30. So there needs to be consensus around the board briefs, what they look like. That's a discussion, a chatting discussion.
Would you like to have that discussion? Because I did have that item on, on the thing as, as rumination.
Yeah, at this time, I'm gonna call your attention to
The 10 o'clock rule?
Yeah, we have a 10 o'clock policy.
Absolutely correct.
And we have a lot of ground to cover after that, in the, so, and we still haven't covered some things. So I don't think it's appropriate for me to want to, you know, deal with board brief now. But it's, it's out there. The other thing is we have a problem with some folks following the rules, and we need to address that. So we need to address our code of ethics and our policies, and we can't have spokespeople besides you unless you delegate. Can't do it.
And I stand admonished, and that was my fault for the last time, so, yes, but you're right. Okay, so let's move off of ruminations, because I think we've ruminated enough.
So are we postponing the reflection session?
I would say the, the consensus was to postpone.
Okay.
And I wasn't gonna put you through a formal, ask through a formal vote. And if someone feels strongly the other way, now would be the time to speak up. Okay. Superintendent's update.
I'll just move fairly quickly here. The enrollment report is what it is. You can see we're virtually identical as last month. The, the department of monthly summaries have been included, I know you appreciate those, I've extended. That appreciation to all of our building leaders. The, the third item, I'm a little puzzled because I didn't put it on, so I don't Okay, let me know. What am I supposed to do here?
Well, I assume you'll tell us that you, you've completed a first round of interviews, there are people coming back.
Oh, no, 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 I'm on the third item, I know the fourth item.
That is the high school principal's search.
No, that's the fourth item. Did I count it on all of them?
No, you didn't.
Oh, well, it just says district leadership team, board superintendent, 17, 18 goals and priorities.
Oh, I don't do that.
Well, that's what's on mine.
Yeah.
Oh.
All right.
Yeah, you're right, I actually did put that down because
It was from last month.
I'm looking, ah, B, district leadership team, board of education and superintendent.
I'm assuming that's, we're going to discuss that when we're all together. Similar to what Mrs. Schut said, we're all going to agree on all that.
Yes, the short answer is we're all gonna agree on that. Certainly, I expect you to have a leadership position in terms of helping to formulate that, because that's part of the evaluation process that we all agreed to. That we're gonna be evaluated, you're gonna be evaluated, how we work together is gonna be evaluated, and we're gonna actually have some goals next year. And then we will evaluate each of us on how we did vis a vis our goals.
Got it.
And in theory, that's supposed to be done in like June, so I figured I'd start the conversation now, because if I didn't start the conversation now, I'd forget.
I, I understand.
And I think you were technically out of the office when I modified the agenda.
I was. The, the last item, whatever number you have is the high school principal's search. I'm referring to the blank insert pages in the packet, so I don't have the number. We have four candidates moving forward into the second round. The second round happens next week. I'm thinking Tuesday, Wednesday. Tuesday, Wednesday. Committee's working very well, they're inundated with fulminous responses to writing samples. So we'll keep you posted from there.
And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the candidates look pretty good?
Yeah, I won't, I mean, I'll defer to some others who are on the committee, but
Don't need a precise readout, candidate A is strong in this point, but it
We have to wait and see how they perform over the next few stages, so thank you. I, I have nothing else to report.
And in terms of what's left in the process to, to be done? I do a second interview?
I probably should be using the mic. After the second round, at the start of the second round, we give the nine writing prompts, which they've addressed. They go through a series of questions, that'll be a 90-minute period because the questions require a more in-depth response. From that point, there's no minimum or no maximum to go forward. The third stage is the reverse site visit. They come here and we assemble groups of people for them to meet. And this is the period in time that we tell the committee, envision them in the scene, is this the person? And the people we assemble are parents, faculty and staff, in this case, students. And our student representatives on the interview panel are actually organizing that now. And other administrators have lengthy sessions with each of the candidates there that are advanced to the third round. I don't know how many that will be until we conclude on Wednesday evening. And then
Well, it certainly can't be more than four. Probably less.
Well, that was profound, it'll be at most four.
All right, thank you, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be brief, as the capstone was kind of a bigger piece of mine the evening earlier. All of our state assessments went very smoothly earlier this month, thanks to the work and attention to detail by Jody Krasinski and our assistant principals, who do the bulk of the work on administering those assessments. Tomorrow, we'll be administering cap makeups for about 15 students. And on April 25th, we have our Connecticut SAT School Day assessment, we have about 20 students that need to make up that assessment. And we have two students left to make up the CMT, so we're in very good shape right now. And then on page 189 is a listing of the building-based professional development activities that took place on April 7th for your reference. And that concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you. And Mrs. Mirman, you're up next, because we're gonna break 10 o'clock. I assume no one has a problem with breaking 10 o'clock at this point? All right, hearing no objection, because I suspect one of your items may take longer than the rest.
Yeah, I can talk fast, but I'll actually go slightly out of order because I'm suspecting one of the items will have questions as well, and I'll put that one last, just to cover the first two items more quickly. We did have our first meeting on, with a group of collective professionals, inclusive of general ed and special education, pupil services. And we met with a team from CERC that are trained in really helping us look at accessible education materials, universal design for learning. And we really began just really our philosophical understandings about what does accessibility actually mean? What does it look like in our classrooms, what do we envision it being? We'll have another session in two weeks. And that session will get more practical, we'll actually begin to look at some tools that actually promote some accessibility. And then we'll have a third session in May to continue the conversation into a strategic plan, which hopefully we'll be able to present to you as how we're going to really enhance ultimately what we're already doing. And it's to embrace that accessibility for all students. The other is just a really informational plug for SEPTA. They have a meeting this Thursday at the Avon Public Library from 7:00 to 8:30. The topic of conversation is transitions. And they have actually selected some volunteer staff who will come and talk about what it means to transition from school to school. And it would be a good opportunity for parents to come and have Q and A around what it is that they're concerned about. I think they are looking for a head count, so if you can outreach to SEPTA if you're interested in attending.
How do they do that? Who's the contact?
It could be any of the SEPTA board members, Sophia Lamb, Stephanie Lane, but you also can contact Barbarone directly, and Barb can get the information to them as well.
We've got an email about it, too.
There has been an email circulating, correct. So the last item, I'm going to update you on the work that we've been doing collectively, Donna and I and Jody. We would have been working with three teams of, I'm gonna refer to them as content experts, because they were hand-selected for their expertise in three major areas. One was reading, writing, we did work on those together because they do go hand in hand. The second was for mathematics, and the third was for executive functioning. Those are the three major component areas that we look at for student supports. It's certainly not some in total all student supports that we need to offer, but there are three of the major areas that we do need to think about supporting. These three groups met for a period of two full days to really go through what we currently have in place, and then envision what we would love to have in place barring any resource restrictions. So we took resource restrictions off the table because we wanted them to dream the dream, right? What is it, it should look like for all students? And I have to tell you, it was some of the most powerful conversations I think I've had to date in this district. The amazing conceptualization of the skills that they're thinking about, the teaching methodologies that we thought about, the different ways that we can provide supports and services to all students, and that being really the operative word, all. And what we have come up with now is a, is a matrix that kind of represents that dream. Out of that, we then prioritize our major things that we want to see in place for next fall. Our dream, the dream, is probably gonna take a good three years, in my opinion, to really fully realize. But there are things that we can do immediately in the fall. And the major themes, just to kind of isolate what they are for you tonight, we're really looking at putting co-teaching in across major core subject areas so that we have two, some classrooms with two teachers in them. The most popular model for co-teaching is a special education teacher and a general education teacher. So for example, there might be a couple of math classes where we would have a special education teacher in that classroom. This is a model that you, we already currently practice through all our other schools, all the way up through middle school, so it's a very common practice already in place. It had been a practice here at the high school, we just need to reinstitute it, so we'll need to look at that piece. The other is to really talk about some, how we're gonna expand our resource supports and to provide two levels. One is sort of a drop-in for any student so that they are continuing to get that support that they depend on to help them get through maybe a particular assignment or a particular research project. The other is to look at more strategic placement of students that really need much more intensified supports. These are students that would have selected goals that we need to work on. The goals in our vision is that they would come from the students, they're working with the students to set their own goals, to say, okay, what is it that we need to learn, how is it that we can improve, what we need to improve? And for some students, it might be mathematical concepts, for other students, it might be improving my writing skills, it could vary from kid to kid. The other is a practice we already have in place and just really beefing up, it's called check-in, check-out. It's a system by which students are attached to a single adult. It is a highly successful system, it's used across the nation, it has a lot of positive research behind it. It probably stands to reason it makes good sense because it does relationships make a big difference. We want to expand that because we do have that practice in place, and we just need to make it more effective and more in terms of reaching broader audience of students. The most intensive supports that we talked about is really setting up some individual courses, because for some students, we really have to think about one of our largest themes of conversation is the distinction between just helping me get through this assignment versus I'm missing some skills that's preventing me from doing this assignment. There's a big difference in those two supports. We are trying to set up a system for both supports are available. Because for some kids, I've got the skills, I just need to help get the push-through of this assignment. But for many students, it's a repetitive issue, it's not an issue of just this assignment. And so for those students, we really need to look at what are the missing skills? And that's where those three executive functioning, mathematics, reading and writing really become important. Executive functionings, I'll just discuss briefly, as, it's all those things that we use as adults to organize, prioritize, systemize, time management, those types of things. For many of our students, that, actually, that part of the brain doesn't develop until you're about 25, so just a natural development is a struggle for many kids. For some kids, we really need to do some explicit instruction on how to manage those things, some very specific study skills, from very specific mnemonics, for example, on how you might memorize something, or how you might go about a task. We're looking at putting in a study skills instruction course, a critical reading course, which we already actually have, but expanding it. A structured literacy instruction, foundations of composition, and a mathematical concept course. So really looking at those threads and those themes around numeracy understandings that sometimes get missed, or kids really do need a little more time really developing. These are skills specifically designed, courses specifically designed to teach those skills that are missing. Therefore, these will be courses with credit, and they'll be curriculumed. And these are courses that will be made available for any student who may be missing skills. Some students, it may be part of their IEP or their 504 plan. For other students, it's just part of an intervention that we're trying to support them with so that they can strengthen those areas that they have gaps in. So it's really trying to provide that comprehensive play across all these areas, so that we're supporting a full continuum of needs, right? Everything from just help me get through this assignment to I really am struggling with reading skills still, and I need some reading instruction.
Okay, let me just make sure I understand. So you're gonna have a drop-in center for people who need assistance on an as-needed basis? How's that gonna work?
Yes, so we are working out the details of the structural pieces, but there's a couple of things we have been talking about. First of all, we still have in play the English Language Arts Resource Center, so that is still gonna be operationalized as it currently is as a drop-in. And we have the math lab, which will also The other thing we talked about is helping to increase office hours for teachers, and the use of structured study halls, where there's an actual study hall alignment between maybe I need just a little extra help in math, and it happens to be study hall duty by a math teacher. So that there's a better, more strategic system of aligning those students to times where they can get help.
Further question, Mrs. Roy.
So you said there is gonna be a study skills class, and it is gonna be credited? So my understanding when we spoke last time here was that the, the study skill, where do the kids with the IEPs go? Where do they get, where do they receive their special education without it turning up on their transcript?
Right, excellent question. So one of the first things, and you bring up a really good point, which does need to clarify. First of all, how we currently label our classes study skills, that's not what this model is. So unfortunately, the name is the same, but the concept is very different. Currently, study skills classes really are our supports for students with IEPs. This is different. If I have an IEP for the area of reading, and I need more reading instruction, I would actually probably be in the reading class, not necessarily the study skills class. The study skills class are for students that really need much more instruction around executive functioning. Some of those students will be students with IEPs, but not all. There are clearly a number of students that are supported currently through our student assistance team, our SAT team, that really what they need are some instructions on, how do I study for a task? How do I more effectively take notes? How do I organize a research project? Those types of things would be in the study skills class. That's currently, it's much more of a mismatch, and it might be more independent supports, this is actually a curriculum course.
My concern with that honestly would be the same, because then you're taking a child who has an IEP, who needs to receive those, who's kind of prescribed, right, to have those supports?
Right.
And they're gonna have to have study skills on their transcript.
Not necessarily, I just want to clarify.
So tell me how that, like, if Johnny needs to have study skills, how does he, Johnny has an IEP?
Right.
How does he, what happens to him?
Sure. So first of all, we would first look at what his needs are, we start there, all right? So if the needs happen to be the needs that are met through that class, then yes, they may have that class. And it is, it is a course that's actually on that national registry, there are plenty of high schools that offer that as a generic course for anyone. And we would be opening it up to more than just kids with IEPs, it wouldn't be a class exclusively for students with IEPs. But for many of our students with IEPs, it's really not study skills per se, it could be reading, it could be math, it could be writing. So they may be in these other courses, and those may be appearing on transcript. The other caveat I want to explain is that what is decided by a PPT can override. So a PPT can make the decision that a student is in one of these classes, but they've decided for many other reasons that it's not gonna be appearing on the transcript, therefore, it's not gonna be a credited class. PPT still has the authority to make such decisions for an individual student, case by case.
So a PPT, you could say Johnny really needs to take this, I don't, whatever the reading class is you're gonna call it, what are you calling it?
We don't have official titles, yeah.
Okay, so reading support, 101?
Yeah.
And if his family can sit down at the PPT and say, he needs to receive his special education in this prescribed way, this is not to be put on his transcript, and he's not gonna get credit for it.
Right.
So each family, when they decide their, their child's schedule through PPT will be notified, and it will be a family decision if they're gonna accept credit and put it on the transcript?
Yes, to me, in my head, it's a common conversation at every PPT.
Right.
The other piece, Jackie, too, as Kim spoke, you know, it's kind of the drop-in, so that's kind of the first level. Then in the second level, it's students that need a little more than the drop-in, you have to tell them to go because they're not dropping in, that need some support. So those could be any student, but those are students, too, that will have specific goals that are monitored in growth, but aren't receiving credit. So, you know, it might be a goal in study skills of managing So, you know, it might be a goal in study skills of management and getting work done, so it will be an assigned block of time with no credit. But then if we have students, as Kim was saying, that don't just need kind of a little bit of assistance and help getting it done, but really the development of the skills in order to do it, that would move up to that third level, which would be a course with credit.
Even for IEP kids?
Mm-hmm.
And what would the name of that course be?
It would just, again, we haven't gotten down to all of the names.
Okay, Reading 101.
But just say, you know, drop-in, okay? If a student needs to be assigned based on, you know, a decision of a PPT or a Student Assistance Team, we'll just say it's Executive Functioning 101. They're assigned for a block of time in their schedule to get those supports, but it is not credit-bearing. But then if a student specifically needs the course and the skills, and it's a course, then they move to that next level. So it's really three levels of support, it's tiered up. The other conversation we had as we were developing the structure was the fact that 90-minute blocks are very long for kind of this remediation, especially if you have a 90-minute block of math remediation after your 90-minute math class. So we're developing skinny blocks within the bigger blocks so that the students are having 45 minutes of intervention, and we're also setting those blocks across the days, like the A and B days, so students can get the 45 minutes every day as opposed to 90 minutes every other day. So we're looking at structuring the supports in that way also.
Thank you.
Let me just make sure I understand in terms of the drop-in. Suppose I'm taping, taking AP Physics and I really don't understand the, how a gas chromatograph really works, and I'm just having trouble. Can I drop in even though in theory I'm taking an advanced class? Or is it restricted so they couldn't do that?
Well, I love that you picked that example. I'm going to, I'm going to back into that answer by first talking about the ultimate vision and then the reality of what we might be able to implement next fall, because I want to be clear about that.
Sure.
The ultimate vision is yes, you would be able to drop in to your teacher probably in that particular case, there would be an opportunity for you to connect. For example, we, I mean, this is how vision works, but I think we thought about, imagine, and some high schools have done this, taking that section of the library and recreating it so it has all the textbooks and it has some computer resources in it, and it's staffed with a duty teacher who goes in there and just is available for a drop-in conversation. That's the vision, that's like a, an idea. On a practical level for what we can implement for next year, we're going to stay with the current structures of the English Resource Center and the Math Lab. And then what we're going to do is try to enhance the use of office hours with teachers and the use of looking at assigning study halls in a little more compatible way so that we have kids aligned with teachers in their study halls who could then they just lean over and ask a question to. Those are the more pragmatic ways we can kind of implement and get closer to that vision.
Further questions? Let's see, Mrs. Hsu.
Do you anticipate at all a drop-in, taking part in the drop-in aspect because they have to find where the teacher is and how to get there, and they might talk themselves out of seeking that support without having a physical space to go to?
Well, first of all, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be a guessing game. It would be clearly advertised. And so, and because we're building on supports that already exist, I'm not anticipating that. It's really one support area that we're modifying differently. And I don't think the numbers are as large, I don't know the exact numbers, but they're not as large as people, I think, imagine. It's not. Most kids, the drop-in part is really with their own teacher. You know, there's a couple of kids who do rely on the extra support, so I think we just need to make sure that we're meeting kids where they're at and what they need and kind of being pragmatic about how that can play out, and it wouldn't be left as a mystery, it would be very clearly communicated.
Is there, I think what you're proposing sounds great, and I appreciate your honesty in that you think it'll take probably about three years to really have it where you want it to be.
Yeah.
Is there any harm in having a hybrid of this and keeping the SAC location until we've really mastered this? Because when you have students like Amir coming forward and sharing that that was a belonging and an inclusiveness space for him.
Right.
That speaks to me. And so I wonder if we are doing harm by not honoring that need.
And I'm going to, I'm going to give you a more complicated answer than probably you're looking for, but the reality is, it's about relationships, right? That's really what he's talking about. And he's, he's right, the power of that particular relationship is really important to him. And I hear that loud and clear, and every student needs that. Every student should have that, right? But it's not always located in one person, and I think that is part of what we're trying to really help communicate and be clear about. Because that particular center has a, has only a small population. We have a much larger population of students who actually get that same need met through other individuals who are staying and still in the system. So what you're talking about on a simple level is we need to find out which students are relying very heavily on that particular one, and what are we going to do to support them through a transition? That is really the takeaway for me.
So do you feel that you have a sense of who those students are and how you're going to help them, and are you going to reach out to the families?
Yeah. I don't personally have the data, but Donna and Jody do. They know exactly the names of the students, they know who they are, they know how many, so we're going to be able to do that very well.
Laura has a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Mrs. Hammond.
So thank you so much, Kim, for presenting that information tonight. I think for me, and you were there at the climate meeting, what we've heard overwhelmingly and consistently from, I would say probably more than 25 students, give or take 20 to 25 parents, and some staff who've said that the sense of place is very, very important, consistency of one space where students can come and drop in, just like it sounds like, not have to go all around looking for which teacher is open during that period, but being able to go to that space next to the library, it's not so much about the person who's the body in the chair that they're going in to see necessarily, it's about having a sense of place and feeling safe, and also that it's for everybody in the building. Every single student in that building, they don't have to have an IEP or a 504 or have been referred to the Student Assistance Center Team. Anyone can walk into that space and get help when they need it. They don't have to have a time assigned to them, they can just walk in when they feel like it. And so I, I have heard all of those concerns loud and clear, and it just, I'm concerned that we, during this transition time, are not going to be addressing the needs of those students, which I think it's at least 35, if I'm not mistaken, 35 to 45 students who regularly utilize that space on a daily basis.
I can't speak directly, like I said, to the numbers. And we also hear loud and clear what exactly what people are saying, and that goes back to, really, I'm going to give the same response I gave to Deb. That sense of space exists for different kids, for different places, for different teachers. And we, I mean, just to kind of highlight an example, kids talking even tonight about their sense of place with some programs that are also being affected. We have to take account that it's really, again, it's going back to all the things we're trying to instill at a whole school level around connection with a positive adult, knowing exactly where I can go, when. There isn't, I think it's kind of a misnomer to assume it's a single spot currently, it is not. There, there are other parents who could come in here and talk about other spaces and other teachers and other programs that are representing those same features. And so I want to make sure that we understand that there's a broader audience of need that we have to kind of consider in these pieces.
Further questions? All right, hearing none, we then move to the next item, number 12. That's, type size seems to be a lot smaller.
What's number 12?
The budget. Have it up on the screen.
I do marvel at people's resiliency with, given the hour, I will be brief. You've, you've had an opportunity to see this. I feel compelled to provide some explanation behind, you know, putting something such as a budget implementation plan together in the timeframe in which we did. We had very little time to put this together because, as you know, we were together the Wednesday before the break, learning of our fate of our budget, and we walked out not having to reduce anymore. That immediately triggered our action to work with our district administrators and such, to seek out the very, I guess, what I call advisement to me, that is necessary to implement this plan. Then we had to-
Sort of interrupt you when you say district administrators, you mean the principals?
Principals, department supervisors, and those that are here at the state.
Right.
So it had to be finalized.
Right.
In order to finalize that, we had to identify, I'm sorry, did I?
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure.
I just didn't know if there was a question.
The scope of the consultation was important to be stated on the record.
Okay. What we have to do is when we identified a position to reduce, we first had to confirm the dollar amount associated with that position. In order to do that, we had to follow it, follow the position. Organized labor contracts typically have a reduction in force scenario. So we had to play out all those scenarios with respect to teachers, not just teachers, but other people's licensure. And then the final person had to be identified. So, again, it's hard to explain, but we were doing that with absolutely two or three days to go. Then there was a break. The reason that a list could not be given to you in advance is because of the commitment that we've made as a district to speak to all of our employees that would be impacted by what I was going to present to you publicly. I thought we had it, there was one error, I take responsibility for the error, a person was not notified till this morning. Bear in mind, I was getting, I was getting messages that you wanted the information. We organized the information, we sent out, your chair also asked to send it out to the community, which we did. That was as fast as we could do it because we were notifying people that were impacted on Monday. And we got the information to you once I had confirmation that people had been spoken to. And the one that did not happen that way was because I was just not available yesterday afternoon, Monday afternoon. So, we moved this as quickly as we can. Bear in mind, the staff for the break, they already had plans to be away. So all the numbers had to be confirmed, so we presented to you an accurate scenario to hit the number that we've been authorized, at least you have, to be part of going to referendum. I do, I do want to address what, we, we did receive some criticism, and I just, I can't gloss it over. The website went down, we don't host our own website. Hopefully you got the information that was, we did contact our network manager. Our host service was not available until Monday, so it could not be repaired. There were some statements that we did it deliberately, that we would not do that. It just, it happened. So, very briefly, that's the backdrop to this. This is an extraordinarily difficult scenario to present to you. I'm not going to be repetitive and read all these bolded items to you, I'm going to trust the fact that you read the communication. We did everything possible to save as many positions as we could. And I'm going to go right to what I have as the last slide, and it's, I think it's the last page in the booklet also, second to the last page. These are the reductions. Now, I do want to just address some comments that came up during the public comment section. I believe one, one young lady referenced, you know, second grade seems to be low at 17 and fourth grade is higher. In my, I can only use my experience here. The expectation that's been articulated is that we maintain class sizes under 20, it has never been stated in stone, but under 20 in the primary years. That's defined as K1, 2. We have worked diligently to do that. The past two years, we haven't been able to do that because we got inundated by new registrants after the school year started. This particular series of reductions, if you look at the total elementary bar, and it's grayed out, it's the first one, we got lucky because four people that we did not know were going to retire, nor, nor did they, or they would have notified me by the contractual date, decided to retire. When that happened, we chose we're not going to fill that. Bear in mind, what results is that you save the entire salary. Because if you get into a reduction in force, you actually have to reduce two positions to get the savings of one because we pay our unemployment directly. So when somebody retired, we said, "Well, we had four that we didn't anticipate." That actually helped us by being able to keep people in their jobs. So we made a decision not to fill them. And, and the notes are really, we, we have fluctuation in enrollment. Kindergarten right now, and I'll show you that on the next slide, I might as well do it now. This, this chart reflects the reduced FTEs in the elementary staff and taken into account, and these are the remaining sections, and those are the class sizes. So I say not bad, however, it's just a caution. I don't know what's going to happen moving forward. I can tell you, though, I did try, go back and research our kindergarten numbers for the past five years. This is the lowest number that we've seen in five years. Now, of course, that could flip, I just jinxed this, where it's coming off of two years that were the highest we've ever seen, where I had to add nine positions in total over two years. Theater, hopefully I clarified, you know, what, what I'm going to characterize as, maybe it was a misunderstanding, but we were not cutting theater, we're taking the courses because of enrollment. And bear in mind that I seek advisement, I do not sit and make the decisions in isolation. So there are times, but I will quickly say, I bear responsibility for delivering this because I ultimately have to approve it to give it to you. But I'm heavily dependent on what information I'm being given. It was suggested the class sizes were low, some were less than six, some were less than That's the story of, of theater. But we, we have a strong desire to maintain the theater program as it was prior to ever offering the courses. The music reduction is a .6, we had a retirement, and you're going to say, "Well, how did, how could you do that?" It's just how we're going to reallocate our current music staff to cover the required periods. And that comes with the assignment stage. Bear in mind, I also have a date. The contract, the AA contract says June 15, we tried to go for June 1st. That means that everybody will get an assignment letter. In this case, somebody's going to be split between schools to cover the music. Wellness is there, there's a change in how the model's being run at the middle school. The five, the five positions at the high school require more significant, a more significant review of the schedule. There were some things advanced, I'll just say, we felt as it wouldn't work, and that's why these are not specific. Because we're working on that right now with the high school administration to identify those. As soon as we have them, you're going to know those. They're not art, as was suggested, they're not, they're not in any fine arts area. These are going to be in content area. And I don't want to, you know, cause an alarm, cause panic. The way you achieve the savings is by, you, you compress- The way you achieve the savings is by, you compress different sections of the same course. We have, we have some sections that we can't compress, Donna's been working diligently at looking at that. And that's where we're going to pick up the equivalent. It may not be five whole people, it could be a half of, but it has to be in the same certification area. That's our chore for this week. Yes, Wendy?
So, as far as Mrs. Patterson goes, I'm wondering if there's some way we can consolidate her classes and keep part of her half time, or, and if there's anything else that she's certified to teach as well-
She hasn't earned certification.
And that she would be seniority over other teachers in that same content area?
What I will say is-
Can you tell what her other certification is?
Well, I really can't, but I can tell you that there's a provision in the contract that says you, in order to be considered for a different certification, you have to have taught using that endorsement within a five-year period of time. I'm sorry, I can't go further, but-
Okay. And she has not had that teaching failure?
So, okay, so I won't, I won't belabor that, I mean, again-
And is there some way to consolidate her classes so we're only losing half her class?
That's something we have to look at.
Yeah. And are the numbers-
That's what we're doing now, bear in mind, I'm depending on what I'm given. And I'm just, I just have to say it, I mean, when, when I have two principals say, you know, we'll give this position, I say, you know, I ask those questions, hello? I ask the questions, are you sure? And then I go. But we will, obviously, we, we take, you know, we give great consideration to the public comment, we'll go back and look at options with them. We don't do it in isolation. Yes, Deanna?
The numbers of students per class, is that based on this year's enrollment, or already who signed up for next year's?
We looked at both.
And it's still low?
And we, and we intentionally split the position with the middle school, I think I said this when I was trying to clarify, to create the theater program for the high school courses. I don't know why the enrollments haven't developed, but we'll certainly look at compressing it and-
I just, I feel like after all of this, we might have compelled more students to want to take theater.
Right, but I think, I think the general misunderstanding was that theater's gone, we're not going to have any more productions. But I have to keep reminding folks, you're looking at the people who actually put the courses in a few years ago to strengthen that strand, but the enrollments didn't develop. We certainly support all of the, you know, the after-school co-curricular design model, that's where, that's where hundreds of students are involved. And we're very appreciative that Thompson Brook did it as a part of work with the parents, because now they're feeding the middle school, which is bigger, and then the middle school will then in turn feed the high school.
So is the television station involved in this too? Because didn't Jill Patterson have some, you know, somebody else?
No.
She didn't do that?
No, no, we-
I thought that was one of her talents, is that she was trying to-
No, she, well hers was more of, I don't know how to describe it, teaching people how to present themselves if they were going to be filmed. As opposed to the actual technology, our applied ed teacher is expert in using that equipment with our students. So, but there's some things we could go back and look at. The non-certified, again, I'm not, I just don't want to read every line to you, it's there. Again, there were some unanticipated retirements, there's a, but more importantly, I'm going to draw your attention to the other reductions made. Capturing kids' hearts, the commitment to that program has now been minimized to only, the remaining money that is left in the budget is to do the new employee orientation. Bear in mind, we have new employees that come earlier than people who have been here, they actually have a longer work year by their contract, and, and that's when the training will take place. Should you support that? Educational consultant, we took days off of our obligation of that. JV tennis, golf, and volleyball, again, when you, when you have to reduce a budget, and it's a broad-based reduction, you have to also be careful when you're sitting where we're all sitting, that you don't send a message, you know, that one thing is more important than the other, because over time, that creates inequity. And that's a tough, that's a tough statement for me to make, but, you know, we're cutting, we're, we're, we have people who are losing their jobs that are, you know, obviously teachers. There's no other place for us to go. Again, and then, we have been fortunate to have established a system where there's a dollar amount that we're able to pre-buy with. And what that means is when our appropriations, when July first starts, and our principals go to work with their staff, and they order the things for the next school year, we look at their line items, usually around the beginning of November. And then we say, we're going to put some money aside for you, but if you need things in an emergency, let us know. That actually allows us to try to get ahead in the next budget. You can see, well, some people may not consider sixty-six thousand a significant amount, it is, in this kind of budget. And then, to support the new, I'm going to say newly designed, or soon to be implemented, student support model at the high school, as Kim has described it in her work with Donna and others, I'm adding, I, I'm proposing to add a social worker to be part of that interdisciplinary team at the high school. And as I said before, the last slide is, is just a snapshot of the class size. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, and it's probably more for the folks that are in the audience, we do have class sized caps, the second bullet, there are class sized caps at different grade levels in the certified staff contract. If we exceed that number, then we have to do something. The two things, one of two that we have to agree on with the association is one, we either pay every, we pay the teacher for every area in which he or she provides instruction, and at the elementary level, that would be four areas, and I can't remember the dollar amount as I'm sitting here, or we have to hire a teacher assistant to provide additional support to the teacher. In cases where we've experienced this, and again, the past two years have been extraordinarily difficult, because our enrollment actually was much higher than our projection, we met with teachers and said, what would you prefer? We actually gave them the option. And that's how we, you know, and obviously, in most cases, at least when we first offered, people were picking the extra person. So, we sat as a team and said, okay, why don't we just commit to putting teaching assistants at kindergarten, first, second, and third? Let's just get it. That, that was not to signal that we were going to go over the cap, but we saw the benefit of providing the extra assistance to service our youngest students, so. And I just leave this in-
But those are gone now, right?
I'm sorry?
But those are gone now, right?
Uh, there's two that are gone. Right, because we can't, they're not filled now, so we're not, we're not displacing someone, so we're not, again, we're not bearing the unemployment cost.
That was just attrition, attrition.
Right. And they, and then that-
So they'll stay in K one, two?
Yeah, so, and, and we weren't, and, and the, the key here is that they're presently vacant, so we're not going to incur any unemployment cost. That's, so, I, I look to you and be more than happy to try to answer questions. We've, we've asked, we've, you know, answered just about every question we were given, and it's really yours now.
I appreciate that. Let me just sort of talk about the counselor for a second. My understanding-
What kind?
The counselor that you're removing.
Yeah.
The, after the removal of the counsel, counselor, the caseload will be average of two oh five-
Right.
Per counselor, and the state of Connecticut, generally speaking, the caseload for an average counselor is four fifty.
Right, and I gave, I sent you information because someone, someone asked me that question from the board, it came through Houston. I sent responses to that, so you have it on your email, it was the, I think it was the last question, and I gave you a chart, it was actually prepared by Kim. And you're right, the national and state average student to teacher, I'm sorry, student to counselor ratio exceeds four hundred. The school counselor, American Association of School Counselors uses a figure of two fifty. Our caseloads for our counselors with the reduction will be around two hundred and five. The reason that happens is because the director has a smaller caseload, Peter, the fellow who was here, has a smaller caseload, that's, that's typically how it's done in every district, and that's how it's been done here. So we're talking, per counselor, maybe twenty students more than what they're currently serving. But bear in mind, our counselors also don't participate in the functions such as student assessment, so they don't organize and coordinate and administer Sback or CMT or even AP testing. We pay, we have stipends to pay people to do that. So it's not an apples, it's not a true comparison based on other places. But it's, we've added two counselors during this administration's tenure, and I outlined that in the response. This is extraordinarily, extraordinarily difficult to propose to you, but this is what we believe to be the best possible solution to the challenge that we've been dealt.
Can you-
Go ahead, you're all-
I just want, when you say music is, so music, so children are still going to have band, chorus, area, so, there's really no cut to programming, this is just a kind of a human, a reconfiguration of-
And thank you for saying that, because the first bullet-
That's very exciting to people, people will be thrilled to hear that.
But the first bullet here is very significant. Now, some folks will say, well, Gary, you're, you're stretching here because, you know, you're cutting theater. The program theater still exists, we're simply, because we're in a position where we're reverting to the way it was before, that's all.
Mr. Shute?
So, I would just like to maybe just brainstorm with you a little bit, or share my perspective of how I'm feeling about these, and I know this is difficult, I'm so grateful I'm not you, that I had to make these decisions.
Well, it's reciprocal, because, guess what? Guess what? It's, we all make the decision, and we're all in it.
Correct, right, but I, you had to come up with these suggestions, I can't even imagine that. I'm incredibly grateful for the social worker being brought back in, so Kim, thank you so much for recommending that. For me, I appreciate academics beyond belief, but honestly, social and emotional well-being often trumps that in my mind. And to have students be good people at the end of graduating Avon is more important to me, and so when I hear programs that really impact students at their core, at their heart, where they are who they truly are and who they're meant to be, it concerns me, that I want to try to brainstorm with you and find another option. When you say theater's and gone, because productions will be there, I was one of the first people at Thompson Brook that brought it to Thompson Brook. So I'm just, I want, I want you to understand that we brought it-
I do, right.
-because we were passionate about it, but the things that I've seen happen with the children that are involved and the relationships I form, I know, Gary, I'm just trying to make a statement.
I agree.
The, the impact that I see on students' lives and how they engage with one another and make relationships they wouldn't have outside of that program, when I hear students say, it's not just the production, it's also the class, that's where I'm like, I don't want to give up yet, because I hear them, and I, I think there's value in during their school day, that's their hook, right? I mean, we hear, not everybody comes in for math, not everybody comes in for science, sometimes they come in for theater, sometimes they come in to sing. That's what gets them in this building, and so to take away that hook breaks me in some level. And so, I just, I would love to hear that you will go back and maybe look and see if we can reconfigure in some way, and maybe rename a class so that public speaking skills can be incorporated, just something to maintain that. Also, for me, I'm very, I'm an optimistic person by nature, so Kim, I have faith in you that we're going somewhere, and by three years, we'll be there. But until we're there, I worry about catching those students that are still uncertain in that SAC tutor position being lost, that's my concern. And so I just want to make sure we're not dropping the ball unintentionally, I don't think it's on purpose, I just feel like, should we catch that somehow just in the interim until we get it right? That's where my heart, that's where my brain is. When it comes to athletics, I wonder, is it possible, and this suggestion was made, and I think it makes sense, to ask every team to give up a little bit so we don't have to drop these three? And then the fundraising, if that's an option, rather than having it look like it's eliminated, promoting that that's an option to maintain it would be helpful so parents know how to get involved, or whatever. But if every team, when we have twenty-plus teams, gave up something, we could save these, and that sounds more ideal to me. I don't know if it's just a dream, but I just, those are my concerns.
Okay. Mrs. Sorrell, I think you were-
Yeah, Kim just gave us a very nice presentation about all the different levels, and nowhere in there did we hear anything about a social worker. And I don't believe in the last couple meetings, we heard anything about a social worker. The first time I heard about a social worker was last night when I looked at this sheet. I'm not saying that we don't need a social worker, I'm just saying it's the first time. My suggestion would be, if this is over a three-year period, maybe that's something we can add. Next year, this year instead, add back half the theater teacher and add back the sports, which would meet a lot of needs that we heard tonight.
One of the, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
No, no.
One of the things that we were wrestling with, with theater, I wish I could look at you and say, I can make this enrollment work. It's just not there. So you would be telling us that if you want part of that position restored, then it's okay for the enrollment to be wherever it's going to be. There's, that's the other side of it. Don't misinterpret what I'm saying, I'm just-
But are there enough, forty-five kids should be enough for a halftime, is close to what a halftime teacher would have, isn't it?
Well, if, right, if they're all in the same two periods, yes, but if they're scattered over the course of the whole day, you may not have. And we're, I don't know where the forty-five came from, because we haven't seen the forty-five. We have the registrations.
Okay, so that, okay, that's a good question, the forty-five, the number that was-
Right, we didn't, again, we, again, we have, we have the number of students that have been enrolled, not whether that will change, because as one young person said, well, the courses that, you know, he wanted to take didn't fit, so they put him in theater, and that happened to work. That, that may happen. Again, it just, there's, it's not an exact sign.
It almost sounded like Jill Patterson was a social worker. I mean, that's kind of what I heard tonight.
Well, because my other comment was that in prior years, we haven't had this discussion until after the referendum has passed, and we know that we have a real final number, because right now, we know what the Board of Finance has said, but if the referendum doesn't pass, then all of this is-
Do it versus again, right.
Well, and the issue, the issue, and I, I, I respect what you just said, I have a problem, I have a statutory problem, because I have to notify people by May first. There's no variance from that.
Okay, but, but with all due respect, that's been a problem for many years, and we've worked around it, so I'm not sure how we're going to run it.
We didn't work around it. We have never missed notifying people prior to May first.
But didn't we notify them already?
We've never had this many. We've never had this many.
We've had to.
Right. So if they're already notified.
Well, Peggy's talking about past years. There's not one year that we've been in this position since I've been here.
Of cutting teachers after May first?
Yes.
It's been non-renewal, not through non-renewals for the most part. This is a very unique year.
And I, I also, I know this, I, I mean, I recall this vividly because this is one of the superintendent's worst nightmare. Because when the budget cycle doesn't allow, align with the statutory language, I'm put in a position where I have to act. Now, I'm just going to draw, I'm not throwing stones at West Hartford, but it's just the one that comes to mind most recently. I refuse as a profession to send out non-renewal notices to everyone who's not tenured. I view that as irresponsible and nothing but, you know, throwing everything against the wall. West Hartford sent out two hundred and eighty-five non-renewal letters, whether they were going to non-renew them or not. And I remember the days of being a new teacher. And every single year, I got a non-renewal letter. No one spoke to me. It was in my mailbox because that was the mindset. And from that day forward, I said, that's not the way to treat professionals and that's not the way we're going to treat our staff. If we're going to non-renew them, we're going to have the intestinal fortitude and the courage to sit in front of them and say, this is, this is why this is happening. Here are some options that might become available. That's why this is so sensitive with me. Because May first is a drop dead date unless the whole, you know, the only town that ever had a problem with this was Montville. And the superintendent's name was Jake Luz III. He threw the keys on the desk of the Commissioner of Education and he said, I, I relinquish all responsibility for the Montville Public Schools. Because they didn't have a budget. They locked the central office doors. It's the only time I've ever seen someone not adhere to the May first. And we, I don't want to send out all the notices. It's demoralizing. And that's why we, I know that this is a very unique year, that we're sitting here right now, having to have this conversation. Earlier years, my first welcoming present was the million dollar cut. That ended up being eight hundred and fifty thousand because of the health insurance change. We still met the May first deadline there too.
I think Mrs. Relling has some questions.
Did you finish, Peggy?
Oh, good. You didn't finish or you did?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. I, I thought you had. I didn't mean to interrupt.
So I have a question with regards to theater in the sense that, um, fine arts is something that, well, the state has, um, backed off moving to twenty-five requirements, credit requirements until in the future. They did establish a date. I forget the exact year. But it increases the fine arts, which is why I thought we were moving proactively to address that. Um, so.
Hi.
And, so that was one of my questions.
Right. It's, and you're absolutely correct. This is a manifestation of the number of participants. That's why it was brought forward to me to say, we can't carry it. It's too long.
No, but I, I guess, I hear you.
And I know, we're going to go back and try to, we're going to go see how, if things could be compressed.
Well, because, what my point is, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear, is that it, well, it's not a, um, requirement today. Uh, it will be a requirement that there's an increased electives and fine arts. So we were trying to proactively get there. We're going to have to get there. And so, uh, you know, what I heard was compelling and I would like to see it if it could be a point five and just at the high school. Um, so that, that, that would be one thing.
Uh, one caution, um, just so you know, the point five is no guarantee that you'll have the same person.
I understand. I'm not talking people.
I know. I, I, this is hard to, when you get into a reduction scenario, when you sit where we sit, you, it's going to sound, the way it's going to sound, you can't, you can't think of people because you have relationships all over the place. You have to follow what the contracts dictate. Um, I hear you.
And the other.
I've heard three of you with the.
The other thought that was presented tonight, which was something I had also, and I know it's not popular, but none of this is, is to increase paid or participate and increase parking. Um, so that's, I, I agree with Deb in the sense that cut all, don't cut three sports. That does not appeal to me at all to, to annihilate certain sports, um, and only certain sports. Um, the social worker, I would, I agree with what's already been stated. I was stunned to see that because that's not been a discussion ever this year. Um, so I, I'm not supportive of adding a position when we're taking away so many. And I've been a strong supporter of, of keeping the, the SAC position, again, position. Um, because I think, given what we've heard is needed and it meets a need, until we get these pieces in place over the three-year period, I would recommend not the social worker, but keep the SAC position.
Let me, if I, if I might rephrase your question slightly and ask, Mrs. Mierman, why do you believe a social worker is preferable and what will they be doing that is different, better, whatever than the current SAC question, rather than have it just rumble around in my head?
First starters, certification and, you know, qualifications around certified staff. I, I think the training that goes on and the expertise that's available is something that we could benefit from. The other is looking at how we're providing that multidisciplinary support across that continuum and making sure that the, the relationship pieces are being managed across that piece of it. So it's beyond just what currently exists in SAC.
So would they be teaching? Because I, I mean, you're, we're talking about adding a lot of classes.
Right. Um, social workers don't typically teach in the same manner as what you're asking about. Typically, it's through either counseling. There is instruction certainly that they do provide. That instruction does look in different formats, everything from, uh, working with a small group on an instructional piece, or sometimes they're embedding their instruction in a moment in terms of supporting a student. Um, so in those pieces, it's not the same as a classroom teacher.
And the only other piece that I would add is I've always been willing to stretch class sizes. Um, I, I've not heard that unwritten, under twenty. Um, I, I believe in the contract, sticking to the contract period. So, which means these could go higher.
Okay. Further questions? Mrs. Young.
So I would also echo what Mrs. Rolly said in that, um, up to the contractual obligations, I would support stretching the class sizes, particularly at the lower grade levels. And I've expressed already my deep concern about losing the SAC position and the current model that's currently in place. And I would be in favor of keeping the SAC position over a new social worker this year as we transition to a new model, if that's possible. That position, I believe, is considerably less than what's currently.
Twenty-three, four.
Right. Um, if there are ways to seek cost avoidance and cost containment that would avoid using outside consultants to save a position, um, we have seen that other districts realize savings by utilizing a professional development model that does not rely on outside consultants, but rather utilizes in-house experts, um, in their own staff, in their own faculty. Over the last four years, by my estimation, we've spent approximately somewhere over four hundred thousand dollars on the capturing kids' hearts professional development model, including consultants' fees, substitute teachers, travel, food and lodging. I do have the numbers here in front of me if somebody wants specifically to break that down in the consultant fees alone. The current budget, the way that I read it, appears to show an approximate consulting fee of a hundred and one thousand dollars. If you take away the twenty-eight-five, that still leaves seventy-two-five on the table for consulting fees alone for capturing kids' hearts. Um, I, I believe this model of professional development is unsustainable and it would be my proposal to eliminate capturing kids' hearts professional development. District Y, I don't believe we can afford it anymore.
All right. Further comments?
Uh, so I guess I would like to know what the administration thinks the number, what is the budget number of remaining for cap, the commitment to capturing kids' hearts for, for this year? Um, I really support the social worker. I feel like our district will, um, really benefit from, from a social worker.
Sure.
I would support, I think we need SAC as we transition. I think SAC should be supported this year, upcoming year. Um, regarding the three sports, I kind of wish this was pitched to the, to us and to the public as, you know, like Crew, I really like how they do a hybrid, they do a hybrid, uh, fundraising through the boosters and then, you know, they, they have kind of a, they, they do some of their own fundraising through the boosters.
They, um, they pay a double pay to participate fee. One comes to the school district and the other goes to the parent support group. I'm not sure what their.
But they also do other fundraising. They, they also have other, like rake, leaf raking and all of those other things. So it would be really helpful to me if, if the students involved and the parents and the teams could kind of be working with the athletic director and the boosters to say, uh, for example, I, I talked to a parent today who, a JV golf parent, and said, you know, if we could raise the six thousand dollars for the greens fees, we can be, you can rely on us for that piece. And then the line item that the administration would be responsible for would be the, um, JV coach. So I, I guess I really just want to plug that we should be supporting that model for some of these sports that, in my opinion, because I, I would feel terrible to lose those opportunities for kids.
All right. If you want to provide an answer to Mrs. Young, the remaining balance for capturing kids' hearts is twenty-three, four.
Twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars.
Yes.
For this coming year?
Yes.
Okay.
But does that include?
That's it. Takes it all out completely. If you take twenty-three, four.
Yeah.
The whole.
What about the cost of the teacher days that they have to come in?
It's all gone. If you, if you take twenty-three, four.
Yeah.
On top of the twenty-eight-five that we've already taken, capturing kids' hearts no longer is supported in the school district.
So we could use that to swap out for the SAC?
But hasn't, um, Pine Grove received some awards for the benefits that that program's providing?
He, I, Jess was going to be the person to make the announcement, but, uh, Pine Grove has been named the national showcase school.
So to say it's not working, it is an incorrect station.
Well, one out of five schools is a twenty percent return on investment. It's not, I wouldn't say that's a stellar, you know, outcome. One of our five schools that's actually using it and benefiting from it.
All right. Let me, it's, the hour is late.
One other idea, have you guys revisited the other post-employment benefits program and actually investing that money as opposed to just letting it sit in cash?
I'm going to take that one.
So at the end of this year, I'm going to have a better analysis based on the retiree pool, active retiree pool and their, not just the premium costs for what they pay on a monthly basis, but the actual usage. Because typically retirees are high users, as everyone knows, and because we're fully insured here, we pay every claim out of pocket. So, uh, interestingly enough, there's never been an analysis done on the active retirees for the Board of Education side, which is why our other post-employment benefits was so low. Twenty-five thousand dollars is, is crazy. Um, so I'll be able to look at that, uh, at the end of this year and have a better model. And so what will end up happening is the analysis that was performed on the full pool, right? Because those retirees were included in the full pool, um, I'm actually going to be requesting a transfer, right? Out of the, the big health insurance line into that other post-employment line.
What's the total obligation at this point?
Um, I, I don't know the total obligation because I didn't have the number ever. We were just told by the, um, the actuary at the time that we need to be a contributing minimum of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year because we hadn't been doing twenty-five thousand. But it's actually far larger than that if you look at the, uh, usage, right? But again, that, that cash, if you will, is sitting in our current employee health insurance benefit line. So it, there's really not going to need to be an increase or decrease. It's going to be a transfer. Once I have the number though for you.
Okay. Could be something to review.
Houston, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, I know, I know the hour is late. I'd like to be able to leave here understanding what the board wants me to do going forward.
Right.
Because there's been a lot of.
Well, no, I understand. That, that, I was going to talk about how I was going to arrive at that situation if you.
I just need to know, are we?
Peggy's got a comment.
I haven't a chance to talk to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay.
Sure. No, I'm just waiting. Um, I, I want to go back to something that Peggy said and we've never been in this position without, um, really having the referendum. And I know it's a unique year and first, you know, I applaud your efforts in presenting this how difficult it was. But, you know, given the information we heard tonight, you know, and the connection that so many students had with the theater program in the school as opposed to just after school, um, and also learning that I think a lot in the community are trying to find other creative ways of keeping those three sports in place without maybe affecting the budget. Uh, you know, I, I look at those two issues and, you know, I, concerned about the five other high school positions that may be lost. I know when you mentioned theater, we have all the theater students, but when we find out what those other five are, we may have all those groups coming out supporting those programs also. So like, I fear.
No, English and math are gone. Sorry.
No.
Along with fourth grade?
I was just, it's fine. I, I understand what you're saying.
And, and I understand you need to give people notice. I know in the past, you know, we didn't go the West Hartford route and give non-renewals to everyone, but we did sometimes, and Peggy can correct if I'm wrong, we'd get, did give it to some staff, but then we're able to hire them back afterwards. And if you need to do that and then we learn more on how we can bring some back, I think that's a situation we may be faced with from what we learned tonight.
All right. My suggestion on how to proceed is that, uh, I will make a motion to approve the superintendent's budget. Hopefully someone will second it. And then someone will then come along and say, I want to make a modification. And then we'll test whatever modifications that want to be done one at a time. So that way we'll know whether or not we're going to have any modifications or not. Because a, a lot of us have said, I like this modification, I like that modification. We need to know if the board is in favor of it. Now, of course, you can always just say, I want to table the whole thing. And so if you, a, a motion to table does our priority. And if that carries, then we have to have a special meeting and we'll come back.
Do we have to do that first before we get into the?
Yep. If you want to make a motion to table, now would be the time to make it. Yes, Laura?
So in the interest of transparency, since so many people did not even know that this was going to happen until, you know, or what was going to be on this until yesterday, I would like to make a motion to table and hold a special meeting.
Okay. Does that have a second?
Second.
All right. It's a non-debatable motion. All in favor of the motion to table? Aye.
Aye.
Three. All opposed? Just one? Two opposed? And the rest are abstentions?
I didn't see.
Uh, me and.
Yeah, and me.
Mr. Burke. So the motion, sorry.
I was asleep. Sorry.
You were asleep. But what's your vote?
Go again after the, uh.
Motion to table.
Yeah, I got that and I got the three include.
The three, three, so it's shoot.
Yep.
Howard, Young.
Now, now, keep going.
Can I have motion to table two? Since it wasn't written down yet?
Well, no, there's only one person makes the motion. The, you could vote in favor of each one.
That's what I'm saying. Yes.
Yes. All right. So that's four people voting in favor.
Okay. I'm keeping track of the motion. So.
Okay.
All right. Now, keep going.
Those opposed? I'm opposed, Burke's opposed.
It's a roll.
Oh, it's a roll is opposed. So then it carries four to three.
What about abstentions? What are the other two?
The other two, I guess.
Abstaining?
I was abstaining. I want to discuss it further. I don't care where the time is.
You can't discuss a motion.
It's not discussed.
No, no, not to discuss the budget. So not voting to table. So.
Okay.
Oh, so then you are opposed to the table.
Well, no.
Abstaining.
He's abstaining.
Okay.
And Mrs. Rell, I think you abstained.
I have to track this.
Yep. So the two abstentions. Yep, so the two abstentions, so technically speaking, the motion carries, which means we have to have a special meeting, which then says, yes, go ahead.
I just, I just want to make sure that you clarify for me what you want me to go back and look at.
Yep, and this is, now's the time-
The first, many of you said that you want to, you want us to go reexamine theater to see if we could maintain some FTE of that position. That's, we're gonna do that.
Other things you want me to look at?
I would like to swap capturing kids' hearts for SAC.
Well-
Okay, I understand, but that, that would be a voting question.
I don't need to look at that, I'm just trying to figure out what work I need to do for you. So, now I have to go look at theater to figure that out. And, and I'll give you all of the options we come up with. I'm looking for the tasks, you need me to produce something.
Mrs. Young, what?
And I'm looking for clarification, and maybe this is just outdated, but when I had added up all these numbers having to do with professional district-wide development on this budget spreadsheet, maybe it isn't capturing kids' hearts, maybe it's something else, and I just don't know what it is. You know, 15,000 is a whole-
My suggestion would be to speak with Heather.
Would it be easier to just put it in an email and say, what are these?
Sure.
Okay.
And that's, and that's out of the, that is the only budget we produced, that was in your folder.
Yes.
Yep.
So, you want all the 330 lines?
All the 330 lines, if you want.
Yeah.
Second number.
I think, well, there were some up here and some down here that were, I'll, I'll go through it.
My suggestion is, speak to Heather.
We'll just give you the details.
She knows everything, okay.
All right, so you're gonna do that, we'll get you that detail.
All right, what else?
And what would the Title IX implications be of getting rid of volleyball?
Title IX implication, okay, I will review that with Tim.
And had, did you discuss everybody taking a cut from every sport?
Again, I'm gonna, I'm going to go back now. If that's something that you want us to do, you know, asking for them to take the cut or just making the cut are two different things. I would certainly be speaking to the athletic directors early as tomorrow and say, okay, have you looked at this option?
And, and how about laying out a fundraising option for-
I, I think it would end up making like a co-op sport kind of-
Not, not necessarily.
It's a hybrid fund, it's a hybrid.
Booster club can help.
I really can't, in the position I'm in, do that. I could, you know, assist them by providing some information and-
That would work.
I also just, I'm sorry. I, I also just wanted to say, you know, in terms of professional development, I understand the value of the professional development and, you know, Gary, you've done comparisons in the past to companies and how important it is. But, in my opinion, I, I think there's other resources out there where it won't cost us anything, and I'm just able to mention CAE or maybe others within our district have, you know, certain specialties where they can help out. Because, in my view, the, the SAC or other positions where you have direct face-to-face contact with students, to me, are extremely valuable in a difficult time like this. And whether it's, you know, staff, teachers, you know, the SAC position, just wherever we're losing that face-to-face, to me, is gonna hurt our students, so I'd rather replace the professional development away if we could.
On adding on to that, I mean, maybe even if those line items aren't all capturing kids' hearts, what else are we spending professional development dollars on that we might be able to find within our own district? Or, you know, for free through crack or some other-
Okay, so, I'm interpreting that as you want to make reductions to the professional development line item.
We want to understand what each of those lines are.
All right, two, that's two different things, you know, giving, we're gonna give you the, the detail for every line item. I just want to be clear that you're saying you want me to go cut it.
No, I, let me make this clear. I think what's happening is a number of board members are saying what their interest is and are giving you sort of, they would like to be able to do a Chinese menu type option. I can't tell you for sure, all of these comments, in fact, I'll tell you, not all of these comments, we'll pass the full board. Because they're basically saying we require additional information. That's fine, that's wonderful. They're also saying that we don't want to vote, because they voted to table it. So, they're saying we'd like some more information. So, do not, I would say, view this as the building of a Chinese menu, which is probably somewhat weird, but one from column A, one from column B. So, if someone says, all right, one of the issues raised, suppose we leave the social worker out? You know, can we keep SAC? That, that was, someone said that. I can't tell you, because we haven't done the voting process, that that commands a majority of the board. Have we made your part, you're now, looking at your face, have we made your task impossibly difficult?
Yes, and only because whilst I understood what each of you said.
Right.
To have me try to go create scenarios is, without understanding where all of you are, is virtually impossible to do. I mean, we've done, we've been so close to this budget, we've already cut this thing.
Procedurally.
I will do whatever you want me to do.
I, I know, and I've, I've never suggested otherwise. Procedurally, what we can do is test out some of these ideas and say, we want to cut this, we want to add this, but that still requires us to vote on this. And we can say, it's a tentative vote, come back to us and let us know whether or not it works. Can we do that? Because that, that way I can tell you whether or not-
Once you, once you vote, you give me the responsibility to implement.
Correct.
So-
Unless we say, come back, we'll take another meeting.
I'll use, I'll use, right, I mean, I'll use the student assistance center tutor. A number of you have raised that, and that's an area of interest for you. Is it unreasonable for me to look at you and say, how many people are in favor of that? Because that plays into every other scenario. So, if people want to keep that position, now I have to figure out how to fund that. Some people have advanced some ideas on how to fund that.
So, would it be helpful to have a sort of a straw vote?
Really, I need to-
To have people say, on the various items, all right.
Can I ask, because we've tabled this.
Go ahead.
I understand we tabled it, but if we're to go along with what we're talking about, if we were to add in, or suggest that we add in SAC, the theater, and the sports, that's $100,000. If we take out the social worker and some professional development to offset that, is there some consensus to that?
I, I will not ever vote to eliminate a social worker.
Okay.
We're not eliminating anyone, we're just not adding one.
I, I'm not, I'm not, it's not in my-
I would support that, Peggy.
Yeah, I would. I would, I would vote for that.
I could.
This year.
You're never gonna get it back, this, this will be, this is-
We don't have it, though.
We don't have it.
My god, wow.
Tell me what your, what your proposal is so I can get it down.
My proposal, big picture, and I'm not sure all the dollar amounts, is if we add in, add back theater, the SAC position, and the sports, round numbers is $100,000.
Right.
To be funded with a limit, not adding the social worker and some savings in professional development or other non-kid line items, up to the discretion of the administration of what those non-kid line items are.
Now, is this, you want him to come back with a specific proposal to that effect? Or you want to approve that?
I'm not sure that we can approve it because we've tabled it, but it was like the direction, but to give Gary, to hearing what Gary's saying and us just tabling it, if this is something that people would generally agree on, I think it's a way to give him direction of what the board would generally agree on.
I, I would agree. The distinction-
No, the theater position can be whatever you can do.
Stop it, it's late.
Stop what?
Chatting on the side. All right.
Who's chatting?
It's-
Peggy and Jay, sorry.
All right. The distinction is, you can vote to, to pick it up from the table, you can actually reel live and prove it. That's fine if that's what you want to do. Those who voted in favor of the motion are the only ones who can make that motion.
The table, right.
Right. You can also have a straw poll for this to see where the board is, and then we'll have another special meeting. Is there a preference?
In the interest of transparency, for the public to participate in this process, I believe we should have a special meeting.
Okay. Anyone disagreeing?
No, but I, I think a straw poll would be great.
I understand, that's the proposal, if she, she was, all right. So, all those in favor of what I would call the Rel proposal? Could you, could you raise your hand?
To do what? Say it again. To eliminate a social worker.
Add back the SAC.
No, it's not to eliminate a social worker.
To add back SAC, some portion of theater and sports, offsetting not adding a social worker and doing a reduction of professional development or other non-kid lines.
That's her proposal.
I want to, I want to understand that when the future building administrator, whoever that is, when they come in, if at some point in the future made a recommendation and a request that they needed to have a social worker in that building to meet their current need, that this could be revisited again.
It's a normal transfer, it's a normal transfer under the finance committee, which gets reported up to us as every other normal transfer.
Thank you.
The administrators made the request already.
Not, we don't have a new building administrator.
These administrators made a request already.
All right.
So, a straw poll means nothing?
Guys, it's 11:30 at night. I want to have a straw poll so we have some direction.
So, lose just an idea of-
All right, it's an idea, it's not creating a motion, it's not telling what to do, it's telling them to come back with a proposal. Would you raise your hands if you're in favor of it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Eight.
No.
Deb and Jackie.
No, Deb and Jackie didn't have a vote.
Okay.
So, who's opposed?
Well, I haven't asked a question. Opposed?
Totally.
Okay.
I'm not opposed, I'm opposed to the social worker.
Okay, understood. Got it, so the votes, seven in favor, seven opposed, as to, sorry, two opposed as a straw poll. All right.
Okay.
Okay, in light of the hour, I would propose that we skip the next items. Communications from the public, just got to ask, get past committee reports. Any further communications from the public? Because we have to go into executive session for one item.
Oh, my god.
Sorry. All right.
Can we go into the other room so we don't have to worry?
Okay. Hearing no objection, we're moving into executive session unanimously at 11:26.